Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I would like to call to order the April tenth, twenty seventeen Shakopee School Board of Education Business Meeting. Sarah, would you please take the floor?
Bowerman.
Yes, ma'am.
Hallid here. McKeon.
Here.
Os.
Here.
Romanski.
Here.
Tucker.
Here.
And Swanson.
Good evening. All right, we're gonna follow the agenda as it was presented. First order of business is the We Are Shakopee Schools Good News Items. And there is a ton of athletic news for our winter athletes to talk about. And you see a number of them in the room today. So I'm going to immediately hand off to Activities Director John Jenke to go ahead and introduce the wrestling and swim teams.
Thank you very much, sir. Thanks for the opportunity to be here. Thanks Chairman Swanson and the rest of the board. I'd first like to introduce our boys swim and dive head coach Eric Hills and our state swim and dive participants. As many of you may recall, our boys swim and dive is only in its ninth year as a program. So really in its infancy as a program thus far. When we first hired Eric, he was the third head coach in three years. And amazing what some stability can do. So now after seven years as a head coach, we are making waves, I'll pretend. At the state meet. And have at the true team state meet for the last couple of years. So without stealing all his thunder, I'd like to introduce our head coach Eric Hills and the state swimmers, swim and divers. Come on up, please. All right, we'll line these guys up over here. You may have noticed that a lot of them have blonde hair right now. That was in honor of our participation at the state meet. So the guys showed quite a bit of dedication this year, just even with their hair color. I promise I'll keep this brief, too. I just wanted to recognize the guys that are here, as well as we have a couple of guys that aren't here today. But we have Liam Bergerson here, who qualified in the two hundred medley relay, the hundred backstroke, the hundred freestyle, and the four hundred freestyle relay. Four events. We have Hans Holver here, who qualified in the two hundred medley relay, the hundred butterfly, the hundred backstroke, and the four hundred freestyle relay. Again, four events. We have Garrett Riley here, who qualified in the two hundred freestyle relay. We have Gavin Wicklander, who qualified in the two hundred free, the five hundred free, the two hundred free relay, and the four hundred free relay. Ooh, it's all off, man. We have Randy Gorder, who qualified in the two hundred free relay and four hundred free relay. And we have Jack Bionden, who qualified in the two hundred medley relay. We also had two guys that aren't here tonight. Alex Kraft, who qualified in the fifty free, hundred free, two hundred medley relay, and four hundred freestyle relay. And Brendan McClay, who qualified in the two hundred freestyle relay. So we were very well represented at the state meet. It was an awesome meet. We went from fifteenth place last year to placing fifth place this year, which is awesome. And so I really just wanted to say that a lot of this has to do with the dedication of these guys. You know, they, many of them actually just came from the pool and are practicing year round, doing a great job of representing our team, working hard all year long to improve the program. So a lot of the credit goes to these guys here for all their hard work. So again, thanks to the board for having us in, and thanks, guys, for a great season.
All right, we need photos and handshakes. I've been experiencing my former life, but nobody's willing to do that. All right.
Okay, let me get some of these right here, maybe like four. Okay, so afterwards, I need to do. Yes, just so we get everyone.
Oh, you guys are so close.
Okay.
Now get it shorter, bring it.
One, two, three. One over safety. One, two, three. Perfect. Thank you.
Thanks, guys. And next, we have also, we had some kind of, some pretty unprecedented success on the wrestling match in the XL Energy Center in St. Paul in early March. We sent eight individual wrestlers to the state wrestling tournament. Seven of them came home placing, and five of them came home with state championships. So with that, to share a little bit more detail, I'll have the fellows come up with our head coach Jim Jackson.
That's how you trick me now, okay? I have it in the lineup, Porter, so it's what we're gonna do. First of all, I want to congratulate the swim team for their success. I know I heard they did really well. Like, we need to, really, that's amazing what they've done in one, well, I should say, seven years. Congratulations to the swim team. I know how hard you guys worked, and I really respect that. So we did have a great season this year. It was an incredibly run for our team. I looked at the record book, and I can only find two other schools that have five state champions in one year. And that's at Forest Lake in ninety-two or ninety-one. I can't remember exactly the date, ninety-three, and then Apple Valley. So now we're the third, we're the third school in history to have five state champions. When a program has success like this, it comes down to, obviously, the parent involvement. That's huge, you know, support of everybody. They're all teammates, they've made each other better. And it's incredible to watch these kids. When we walked out there that night and had five state titles, it was like, wow. And I was, I was on cloud nine, the kids were on cloud nine. The credit goes to the kids. They've been training since they've been five years old, and they go into tournaments, their parents take them to tournaments, and it's year-round training, and it's a lot of things that they had to do. So I just wanted to say congratulations to the kids, and the credit belongs to them and their families, and how hard they've worked over the years. Right here, Max Crowe is a pretty good example of that. Max, first year on varsity, and he placed third. He got, had a real tough loss in the quarterfinals, got taken down ten seconds ago, but he came back all the way for third, which is really hard to take. To me, his third and fifth is really hard to take, so he took third in state. Congratulations. Sam Webster wrestled one thirty-eight for us this year, and he got all the way to the third and fourth place match, and he got beaten triple overtime for the third and fourth place match. So, so close, but he just had a great season. Next is Alex Lloyd. Alex is a two-time state champion, and I don't know if you saw that match. If you ever get a chance to watch it on film, he won in the last probably eleven or twelve seconds to the beautiful foot sweep. It's all, it was an incredible move, and the kid was his best friend that he wrestles with. And the kid beat him earlier in the Christmas tournament, and then he beat him in the state finals. So that was really incredible, incredible match. Next is Alex Crowe. Alex is a senior, and he's one of our captains. He's gonna wrestle for University of Minnesota next year. And I was really happy for him, because he's placed three other times in the state tournament, and then this year he won the state championship. So he was so close so many times, and then he easily could have been a four-time state champ, but it didn't work out. Kept, kept working hard, working hard, and he became a state champion. So really proud of him. Next is another senior captain, who's also from University of Minnesota. It is Brent Jones, and he is a four-time state champion. And that's, that's, that's history right there in itself. And if you watch his picture after he won the match, he was just relieved. I don't know, nobody can figure out how he felt, because no one's gone for four state titles in a year. So it's really an incredible run for our team and for our kids, and just very thankful. Also want to say something to John Jenke for his support, and Trey Davis. Those guys have done a great job supporting our program and our kids, and just want to say thank you. Thanks for having us, we appreciate it. Thanks, ladies and gentlemen.
All right, as we say every meeting, you're certainly welcome to stay, however. We'd appreciate it if that's not in the cards. And thank you, parents. All right. Moving along with good news, we've got another item on here that, it's good news, but it's kind of interesting news. It's kind of one of those stories that we probably don't do a good enough job sharing. But since it just happened Friday, and it's very relevant, I think it's important that you know about it. Most district parents are aware that Sweeney Elementary had a small stomach bug, shall we say, go through the building last Thursday and Friday. I won't get into the details of that, suffice it to say, it probably wasn't pleasant for anybody. However, there was a little success story that came out of that that I think is important to talk about. And that is, and I understand it was Friday morning, correct me, if I'm wrong, it was Friday morning?
Right.
We had something like twenty-four staff members ultimately call in sick due to the illness that was going through the building. And twenty-four staff members in any one building is a significant hardship. And I just wanted to give a shout out to our administration and building principals, because we had a number of people that stepped up and went over to Sweeney to help substitute teach and help out during that particular time of need. So I just want to, first of all, call out Principal Zahn and her team for reaching out, and the nurses for reaching out to the Minnesota Department of Health right away to try to figure out what it is that they needed to do. And then, of course, the teachers and the staff and the custodial, bless the custodial folks, you know who you are, for everything that you, I'll just say extensive help. That's the term we use there. And then again, the district administrators, who stepped up to help out. It's Dr. Thompson here, Dave Orlowski, our testing and data administrator, Jeff Poletti over from the high school came over, Adam Dipburner from Pearson Sixth Grade Center, Paul Mettishine from West, Matt Hedrick from Junior High East, as well as a couple of other TOSs joined. So there was, and I don't want to hit everybody, there could be other people, so I apologize on the gate if there were other individuals that were there. The fact of the matter is, people in the district stepped up when that building was in need, so I just want to throw a big shout out to them for helping out to make sure that everybody was taken care of. So, I would like to thank you guys. And I've got two pages of incredibly exciting detail on how to properly handle this particular illness, if anybody wants to. Maybe not. Maybe we won't talk about that, but. All right, we're gonna move on to consideration of the agenda as presented. There's no additions, correct?
No.
Okay, so I will entertain a motion to consider the agenda as presented.
I'll do that.
Second.
Reggie and Matt, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item four, we consent agenda. I'd like to entertain a motion to approve or dissent the agenda.
I'll make the motion.
Okay.
We'll go with Angela and Tony. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. All right, so we'll jump into old business, discussion items, item five. And I would like to introduce our high school principal Jeff Poletti, that come on up, and also Stuart Mayhem, yep, Stuart's with you. Go ahead and give us an update with respect to student registration.
Sure. Well, good evening, everybody. Thanks for having us. Yeah, I want to take a little bit of time to give the board and everybody an update on the high school registration process here, and kind of go through our timeline and where we are. We're in the, in the heart of the staffing, sectioning is going to be coming up. So I thought we would start with a little bit of a timeline, and I'll start talking, and feel free to jump in, I kind of built that zone, all right? So as most of us know, back in January, we started the registration process for the seventeen, eighteen school year. And I think an important thing to point out is, in the high school world, when we're looking at our sectioning, our registration, everything is student-driven. We're looking at student enrollment, so a real simple way to put that is, is that if we have the enrollment numbers in place, that the course is going to run. So we do our registration process in January. In February, Stuart is doing, Stuart does the master scheduling for, for our building. I did that in a previous life, I did that for ninety years as the head principal. I'm happy to hand that part over to you now. I thought I was gonna give it back to you. No, no, it's a team, it's a team effort. But, but what we do is, is, you know, getting all of the kids registered, and then doing the cleanup, tracking down students, really making sure that those numbers, the kids that we have placed in the courses, that they're, they're registered correctly, we've got them where they need to be. And there's a fair amount of cleanup that really has to take place, so you have numbers that are good. Now, in a perfect world, when you're looking at, because we are, it's student choice-driven, in a perfect world, you would love to have everything filled up, or you've got nice, full, robust sections of every course, everything just falls into place perfectly. But for doing this on my tenth year, it never works out that way. So what you have to do is, you have to look at it from, I call it kind of thirty thousand feet from above viewpoint. So when you go down to item number three, we receive a tentative, and the key word there is tentative, staffing allocation from the district office. And that staffing is based on, in our building, it would be tenth and twelfth grade student enrollment for seventeen, eighteen. So you, and that is based on your overall enrollment, and that's how it works in all public schools. You have this huge chunk of FTE, and then it's our responsibility to go in and look at our overall building needs, and make sure that we're maximizing all of our, our FTE, that that is being maximized, and so that we are being responsible and efficient with how we do that. So what happens is, when you, when you, when you go through a first pass with that, is you look at, okay, well, if I've got a section that is running, if I have a section that I've got good, healthy twenty-five, thirty, well, that's a no-brainer. It's going to run. But what happens is, you will get into sections where, I use twenty as a number. And that's a number that I've used not only here, I've used that in previous districts that I've worked in. And if you talk to, you know, some of my peers that do this in other areas, you look at it, because when something, when a, when a section is below twenty, whether you're looking at ten, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, you really can't make the determination right then and there of whether or not we're going to run this. Now, of course, I want to run as much as we can, because it is student-driven, it's student enrollment, so you want to give kids what they, what they want. I mean, that's really our, our goal. But you have to live in the reality of, in, in public education, no matter the circumstances, is there's only so much there. So you have to make sure that you are covering all of your departments, all of your needs. And so when you go through it for a first pass, a course that is below that twenty threshold, you may not automatically get a section assigned to it, because you have to look at a lot of factors. You have to look at, okay, what is going to, what could be the possible trend with this course? Could it be, because it's gonna be a singleton course, well, if we run this, and it's a singleton deal sitting in the schedule, well, you could have, and it's very likely, you could have a conflict. Well, when you have a conflict, the kid has to choose. Am I gonna take this course, am I gonna take that course? And I've seen that before, where you'll have something that will, will say we're gonna run it, but now you're running it really down into, you know, it's one thing if it's sitting right around the eighteen, nineteen, and we're so close to being able to run it, but then because of conflict, well, maybe that goes down. And now we're only taught, we're talking single-digit numbers. And that's just, you can't, you can't sustain that, because when you're, when you're running that, that means something else has to give someplace else. So that's what makes it really a moving target. And this is a process that goes on now, and will continue to go on into the summer. So we receive that initial, that number, we go through, Stuart and I, we go through our whole spreadsheet, and we start filling things in. Now, one thing that you have to do is you need to be in communication with your teachers and with your staff, because we are in, you know, as we know, our money goes towards people. So you have to communicate, okay, here's where we are in the process right now. And so in our district, we want to make sure that before we're leaving for spring break and late March, that we're meeting with department chairs, and we're having that very open dialogue about, here are your enrollment numbers, and here is where things are at right now. So before spring break, we have those conversations, we go through, and we go through the whole process with all the electives, with all the core areas. Now, what we need to do, and this is what we'll continue to do, Stuart has to look at, okay, well, if we make a determination that we're not going to run a course, well, we still have a number of kids that are signed up for that. Well, kids have to go someplace, kids have to have a schedule. So we have alternates, and we have things that we look at, and we'll look at trend data and all of those, all of those factors. And there's conversation going on with, with the district office, with HR, saying, okay, here's what we, here's where we're looking at right now, here's where we're coming up short. So it's, it's very much a very fluid back and forth dialogue. All that while, we're just trying to determine what student needs are. So we get into March, I'll just look here. So that's, so in March, we were determining section needs based on student requests, and then continually working with HR to determine building needs, and then, like I said, meeting with the department chairs. So that, that is, that is what's going on right now. Now, we can't, you can't play this game going back and forth, you can't do this forever, because we, we're working with humans that have jobs, and people need to know where they stand. And really, I'll use myself as a personal example, where I had to make a decision. I came from an elective area. I was a business teacher. And I can remember my very first year of teaching at Eden Prairie. There was just, it was an issue having to do more with state standards, but there was some writing on the wall that indicated to me that, you know what, there's a good chance that sections that I was teaching might not be there the next year. I had that conversation with my assistant principal, and it was hard for me to hear that, but I needed to know that on the front end, where I stand, because I can make the determination, okay, am I gonna stay and just kind of, you know, wait, or do I have to look at other opportunities that are out there? At that particular point, I looked at an opportunity that was out there, found a great job in Bloomington. I probably would have been okay for a couple more years at Eden Prairie, but I wanted to know that, to know where I stand. Whereas, a couple of years fast forwarding, in Jefferson, I was the only business teacher at Jefferson. I can remember my assistant principal saying, Jeff, look, I've got a point seven for you right now, I need to shuffle some kids around, I need to look at enrollment, I want to get you up to a one-point-oh, but I just don't know what that reality is going to be. You know, within a couple of weeks, I stuck it out, I got myself up to a one-point-oh FTE. So I haven't gone through that personally, I know how that, how that process works, and that's what we're in the middle of right now. So, I think we can try to skip that. So, so right now, we come back from spring break, and there are some determinations, some information that has been new to us since we went through that first round. You know, three bullet points up there, and I know one issue was, we're looking at some of our world language areas. Well, we had some areas where enrollment was low. After kind of, you know, having that dialogue, and then, again, looking at my overall building needs, I can comfortably say that in seventeen, eighteen, I can run all levels of German courses next year. It's awesome. It's great. That's what we want to be able to do. In our tech ed department, when I initially went through that, yeah, there were some sections on there, three or four different courses, where that enrollment was, I didn't have anything, I didn't have a section allocated to that. Well, now, as we're working through this process, I can say that in our tech ed department, we're running our full program of courses in the tech ed department. So those courses that initially, that first run-through were, there was a zero, again, I can say we're running, we're stem, we're, as a matter of fact, I can't think of the top of my head of one tech ed course that we're not running next year. And so that is good. I don't have, we don't, Stuart doesn't, Stuart doesn't have to look at all those rosters of kids and look at their alternates, and to move them around. And so class sizes will continue to be monitored throughout the spring and the summer, and that's what we watch, we watch averages. And if things start creeping up, well, I'll get ahold of Scott here and say, look, my average is, because kids are coming, kids are going, we're shuffling kids around, we're gonna have conflicts. All of those things that we work on the schedule, we're gonna continue to do that. And everywhere I've been, heck, just this past July, I know right upon my hire, we were hiring social studies teachers. So those are just things that are just part of that normal process that we, that we go through year in and year out.
Yeah, we're kind of, yeah. Let's just say, and this is, but let's just say, we stacked your building at an average class size of thirty. You know, just, you know, in a lot of classes, it's easy to run. Let's say, in English ten class, you have five hundred kids taking it, you know, you're gonna have, you know, fifteen, twenty sections of that class. Where it's tough is where you get that singleton, where you get eighteen or twenty kids. And we gotta be careful if we run those or not, because any class we run at that low of a number, if our average is thirty, that means that, then if you're running a twenty class, you might get something that's thirty-four, thirty-five, thirty-six. So we gotta be careful. And like you're saying, if we have eighteen that sign up for a class, you still have to build a schedule. And there's a good chance that it's only one section, that, just to summarize, that five kids, when you're building the actual class, might not get the class. It just doesn't work, because, you know, where you put it and all of that. So that's why sometimes when you hear people say, you gotta have enough kids in one section. And this is standard, every high school across the state of Minnesota, they're having those conversations. But we also are mindful when we say, when you throw something up there like a German three, if we have kids that have made a commitment into a foreign language class, and they've taken the first two years of that, and there's a low number in that, like that eighteen or, you know, something like that, you know, you're, you pretty much guess that you're gonna try and make that a class run, because we made a commitment to those kids to be in those courses. So very seldom is it that a class is gonna run, or a class isn't gonna be dropped unless there's not enrollment for it. It isn't like we have classes out there where kids are dying to take them, and we just start running them. That doesn't happen. If there are kids that sign up, we're, we're student-driven, so if there are kids that want to take courses, and there's enough, and with a school, that's one of the advantages of having a school the size of ours, we have a plethora, a number of kids that want to take a variety of courses. So it's very seldom that a niche course doesn't have enough enrollment to get twenty kids out of a whole high school to be able to run a course. It's very, very unusual for that to happen. So we just want to throw that out there, because I hear that being said, and it's the very odd norm, it would be very odd for a class to not run theirs. I think Stuart's gonna have some of that information, some history up there.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And on top of that, the numbers that drive me nuts is, say you get thirty-nine kids that sign up for a course, when you know you're going to run it, and then you're like, okay, I gotta run two sections of that, I'm gonna run two sections, I got two small sections. So it really is, you just, you just have to, you have to look at, at the, at the kids and just, because really, what you're trying to do in the end, you're trying to get kids what they want. That's really the whole goal in mind, is let's get kids what they want. Now, you know, when you're dealing with singletons, we have, we use Infinite Campus, and it's a good program that will, you know, as far as, okay, what hour does this go on, that will tell us, okay, if you put it in this hour, well, just know, you know, ideally, you're looking for, there's zero conflicts. So if I put it here, there's not gonna be one conflict. Well, we know that we have a building of eighteen-hundred students, you're gonna have some number of conflicts, which is why we want kids to sign up for alternates. And I, and I've had that before, where kids, you know, they really, really want to take this, and they really, really want to take that, but, you know, you took the path of least resistance, so it was gonna impact a least number of kids, but you're still gonna land there sometimes. But the nice thing is, is, you know, another consideration is thinking of the course of a high school career. Well, if there's an elective that can't run this year, well, maybe it can run next year. You know, luckily for Tech Ed, I don't have to say that this year, because we can, we can run that. But those are things that we think about, too. Okay, if it's, if something isn't running this year, and a student wants to get this experience in their high school career, we keep all of that data, and we watch all of that as, as we move towards the high school, the high school career. Last slide here, I thought this was really interesting, especially for me being a first-year principal and first-year administrator in Shakopee, as Stuart actually put this together, so feel free to jump in here if I'm, if I'm misspeaking or anything. But he did a really nice job of demonstrating, if you look at the past five years, as far as when we go through this, our registration process, when we have section, and we call a section, a section is different from a class. We, we look at a section, if you picture a schedule, the little square, like one, a semester class would be a section, that would be a one section. But if you have a English ten, if we take that year long, well, that's two sections. So I just wanted to, some of the language that we use, we look at things in the language of sections, because we're looking at it as far as, you know, getting kids in a, in a certain place. So when we look at here, so if you go through two thousand thirteen, fourteen, nineteen total sections, so that's necessarily classes, probably that number is even lower when you're talking about classes, not running due to low student registrations, and that two hundred sections available for student registration, that, that is the overall, that's the total number of sections that students have available to them. That's a really cool thing, to have that many available sections, when you're looking at your cores, your electives. That tells us that we have, in Shakopee, that we have a very wide range of options for kids that are available.
Just to give you an idea, each student picks fourteen. So of those two hundred choices, they have to find fourteen that they think will fit.
Yeah. So when you go through, when you look at, okay, in thirteen, fourteen, we have nineteen total sections not running due to low student registrations, just going down nineteen, seventeen, eighteen, twenty-one, actually going into twenty seventeen, eighteen, the lowest number in five years going into, going into next year. So that tells me that as far as what we are offering our students going into seventeen, eighteen, is the best that it's been in five years. I thought that was really interesting, just because I, I, you know, as a new person, I don't know, I don't have anything to compare it to.
And the only reason there's five years up there is because that's how long I've been here, so I had, I had the information. Every year, we've had to have those tough conversations with teachers about, we can't run this class, we don't have the numbers to run that class. We've had to call students down to the office and say, which one would you rather take, because we can't offer that one unfortunately? Because we can't offer that one unfortunately. We've had to have those tough questions since I've been here. And this year, thank goodness, it's the least amount of the classes that we're not running next year, which is exciting once I went back and looked at everything.
Questions?
Yeah, what courses are we not running?
What's a classic that doesn't run? I mean, every year, there's something like AP Music, every year. I can probably think of classes that would. Yeah, that's a class that did not run for a couple of years and we no longer offer. One class that didn't run the first couple of years that was up here was a CIS Democracy class that the numbers were tended to be right around seventeen every year. We just couldn't get it where we wanted it. Because like Jeff was saying, if you get a class where seventeen students register for it, by the time we actually run it in the fall, it's down to about twelve, sometimes more than that. The last two years, this year and next year, that's, that's an example of a class that is running again. So it does, we continue to offer those classes that don't run. One year, we'll offer it again the next year, hoping that we'll get an influx of students that will be interested in it, so.
Yeah, another one that comes off the top of my head is, is, as you know, we have our Saber Store at the high school. Well, we had a class that was just a dedicated class that was just for the, for the running of the store. Well, we had maybe five or six students for that class. But we know, as we move into the academy, we're going to have courses within the business and entrepreneurship that are going to kind of wrap around that. But what we can do for 1718 is if you're a student and you still want to have that experience with the Saber Store, what we can do is we have, we have a course, a starting their own business course that is running. We're running a section in the fall and in the spring. So that would be, if you're a student that really wanted to have that opportunity to do that, well, we can still provide that opportunity. But what we'll do is we'll just do that out of our starting the own business, which kind of makes sense, right? To do it in that area. So, so whenever, whenever a door closes, you always want to look for creative ways. Okay, if there's an opportunity that we can't offer, well, how can we get creative? How can we create that opportunity for, for students? Which, I know this isn't a discussion about the academy, but that, that's really a foundation of, of an academy model, right? Especially as kids get into that junior and senior year, and we're looking at those, that individualized learning through those internship experiences that, you know, if there's an experience that you want, and it maybe it isn't, you know, custom made to exactly this course, well, that is one of the cool things in the direction that we're going down is that through our business partnerships, we're going to be able to provide those opportunities for kids. That's cool.
One example is, to go along with what Jeff was saying, is AP Studio Art. That class has always been very questionable, just based on the numbers, whether we can run it each year. The awesome opportunity that kids have is the CAPS program, the Digital Design CAPS program. And I know that Ed Cox has already been in contact with some of these students that were, that had chosen the AP Studio Art that isn't running. So they have that opportunity, which is still a really great opportunity for those students. There's one other business class, it's an advanced level. So sometimes in that second level, that second tier, where the student might take the lower level, the example is Advanced Computer Applications. They take the first level of computer applications and maybe realize that business isn't their, their area to go into, so we didn't get the numbers there. Biology is an example, because of our science curriculum changing over the last few years. We offered biology this year for our seniors who maybe didn't get that requirement when they were in 10th grade. Next year, because of the change in our sequence for science, we're offering a lot of chemistry. And so we didn't get the numbers in biology to run it next year. So we're looking at other ways to be able to provide for those students to still get that credit that they need for graduation. That's one of the, one of the fourteen classes, so.
I just want to say thank you, very informative.
Yep.
That was very helpful.
I'd like to see the war room, where you plot all of this out, all the degrees of students, all the courses.
It's a 23,000 beast puzzle. And his was probably a lot more at YZ than 23,000.
Well, I was good there.
No, thank you very much. It is, you know, there's been a lot of comments out there and it's, it's good to have facts and what, how the process works and what's real. It's also particularly encouraging to see that some of the sections, there was some speculation about it's not, might not have, so it's good.
Yeah, I think the hard thing is, is that because it is, it's, like I said before, it's a very fluid process. And so it isn't one of those, it's not something that you can just go and say, on this day, we're going to do this and this is what it is and this is how it's going to be. It is something that goes over the course of a number of months. And, and so what is, you know, if something was a reality on March, or in March, whatever date you want to choose, because we're still going through that process, well, it changes and it evolves. So we have a lead, what, September 4th, or whatever that is. You know, I mean, I can literally remember doing conflicts or balancing or doing, you know, working on that right up until the day of school because you just, you just want to get it right.
Jeff, there's parents out there watching or even students that are curious or concerned about a particular course, one way or the other, how would you recommend that they get the answer that they're looking for?
I think right now, in this process, the best thing to do would just call us, just to reach out. I know what I, what historically, what I've done before is I have put on, you know, not to use my previous, but in my previous district, what I've done is once I've known, okay, I know 100% for sure, I've put it on the website so people can look at it. I'm not at a point where I want, I want to do that until I, you know, until Stewart is well into building the schedule and doing all of that. But as the case with, with anything that is related to the high school, if anybody ever has any questions, don't hesitate to call me, email me.
And the one thing we've done the last three springs at least, once we go through and do a lot of this cleanup, we give the students back their registration, what they registered for. So it's not their schedule, but it's a list of the classes that they will be in come next fall. Each student, when they register, puts in four alternatives. So they're required to put in the fourteen that they want, that's their, their top choices. And they put four alternatives. So if I come to John Jackson and he doesn't, and that's one of those fourteen classes, I go right to that alternative, put that in. At the beginning of May, we give all of our students that request sheet of paper that has their fourteen classes listed. So one of those classes they registered for will be gone off that sheet. That's when they'll know at that point, but like Jeff said, they can come down and ask questions at any time too.
Great. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Okay, next we move on to old business discussion 5.2, we've got a budget update. And I'd like to call Todd Netsky. And Todd is actually, we've got a couple of bullets that Todd and I are going to go back and forth on. Actually, he's going to take the first two, then we'll take the last two. There?
Sounds good. Okay, so first of all, budget update on fiscal year 2017. So I've completed the process of revising the current year budget. And just as of late last week, that came to an end. Happy to report, we are still coming on, on board of that number we've been talking about, the $1.8 million that are on a signed fund balance, so, so that's good. And moving on then to the, to next year's budget fiscal year 2018. I'll immediately start looking at next year now. And I've lined up meetings with all the administrators and the department leads. We'll be meeting with them on the 18th of April and then finishing up on May 2nd. So we'll be meeting with staff, going through their budgets and working through that. So also, when we're developing a budget for the next fiscal year, there's several unknowns, such as the enrollment. So we'll be developing enrollment projections for next year. And we need to agree on a percentage increase from the state. Right now, that's anywhere from 1% to 2%, basically is what the state's talking about. So we'll, hopefully, we'll know more by the time we approve that budget. But right now, it's unknown. Those are the big ones, staffing, of course, Scott's working through the staffing and so on, in terms of how that's going to look for next year. So from a timeline standpoint, we will approve the FY 17 revised budget at the May meeting. And I'll also bring the first reading of the fiscal year 18 budget. So we'll have a first look at how that is going to look from a number standpoint and then approve that in June. So, any questions on that?
In that timeline, Todd, for the benefit of everybody watching, that's consistent, fully done historically. Because we're always dependent upon what the state's going to do since we're in a budget cycle. And given the fact that there's three numbers floating around, House, Senate, and Governor, it's, we're not going to be able to have a budget until we have some certainty around the state income source because that's, whatever it was I projected, the one I made in the presentation, eighty-seven percent of our revenue. So the timeline is consistent, fully done historically. Correct?
Okay, any questions for Todd? Okay, all right, I guess we're good. All right, so I'm going to take the next two items, which, for the benefit of the public here, thanks for being here, everybody. One of the items that has been discussed in recent weeks is the formation of a advisory committee. We don't know exactly what they'll be called, but it'll be an advisory committee that will work with the finance committee and the board to take a look at, at the budget and financial related matters. And there's been a lot of questions floating around as to, how would that look? When does it start? When does it not start? And I had a conversation with Amanda, I see Amanda's here. To get something in the paper, just so folks know what that kind of a process should look like. So I just wanted to take a moment to reiterate the formation of that particular group. The first step was our finance committee met at 5:00 tonight before this meeting, which is a regular occurrence for us. And we agreed that effectively, the first step was that we need to approach the board and say, this is a good idea, let's go ahead and go forward with it. We actually have a retreat that is scheduled for next week, the 24th. That is a perfect time for the board at that time to take a look at, what, what should that particular group look like? How many individuals should be a part of it? Is it 12? Is it 20? Is it 60? You know, those kinds of things. How often should they meet? What is the frequency? Who's the leader? These kinds of things. Where should they meet? So we'll figure out those items at the retreat. And then we'll be able to come back at our next business meeting, which I believe is the, is May. And we will be able to, at that point, say, all right, this is what we're going to do. We're going to go forward with it. We'll be able to actually approve the formation of this committee and have all of the details available for the community at that time. I actually envisioned the very next morning, literally, you know, that next morning, that folks would be able to, based on, again, whatever the details, which have yet to be hammered out, whatever that looks like, being able to go ahead and apply for or register for or otherwise get your name on the list to be considered for that particular advisory group. And we would use, I would assume, the same type of a process that we used when we formed all of the referendum committees. There was a ton of different work and a lot of different committees that were going on there. So we'll use a similar type of a process. And the reason that that makes good sense is, our new director of finance is Suzanne, and she is actually joining us early June, first week of June. Suzanne has done this and is doing this currently, right now, in her current district in Hopkins. It would not make sense for us to form a group and have them launch without a leader who is actually going to need to be there to guide them and direct them and who does this right now. So that is why we want to take a thoughtful, careful process, get the names, get the team built, get the process built. Leader comes in in June, I envision maybe the first, second week of her being on the job. She gets together with that particular advisory group right away. And then they, they launch into whatever, you know, they determine their body of work is going to be. So I wanted to give you a high level, what we're looking at there. And just really, really for the, you know, the public, but also for the board, if you have any procedural questions that we can go over on that topic.
So Will Hashout bought them, they would meet. Sort of details are obviously with Suzanne's input, knowing that she's got a knowledge based on this.
Yes, exactly.
Scott, I don't remember precisely the process we followed for the task force and the committees, but may I make a safe assumption that, that there's probably going to be some self, either nomination form or application forms posted on the website? And so anybody who's interested can fill that out. We could go through that and say, we're going to have 10 members, you know, we've got 30, we got to pick. Or we're going to have 10, and they only need to apply, you know, you do, everybody makes it. But that's how people can express their interest. And then we could inform what we have to do.
Correct. Yep, that's all we'll do, we'll just follow whatever we did for the referendum committees. Okay, and then to follow up with.
Are you guys taking questions?
Uh, no, nope.
Noting.
So the second piece of that is, there's also been a lot of questions with regard to an OSA audit. I know that's come up in many different circles. So here's what I want to say about that. There are individuals, both in the community as well as administration of the board. A lot of people are doing a lot of research, a lot of legwork to try to figure out, is that a good thing to do, not a good thing to do, this and that, whatever. There's lots of information that's coming in. It is our, really a recommendation, that all of those pieces of information get ultimately put in front of this group that is going to be formed. Because really, although that group doesn't necessarily, and I mentioned before, they don't actually make the official policy or, or make, you know, they don't approve anything. They can strongly recommend, one way or the other, what sort of action the board needs to take or should take. And I believe very strongly that any decision with respect to any sort of state auditing that whether it would not happen, really needs to be, really needs to go through that particular group. It's not that we have an inherent inability to make that decision, but at the end of the day, if we make that decision, the community won't have had a voice in what that looks like. So I envision, we bring in the professionals that do that kind of work. The people that that committee want to see and want to hear from, want to talk to, so that they can make an informed decision, something that allows them to dialogue perhaps. We were talking about, could it, could we get some of these state auditors in? Could we potentially get a representative in here? Somebody where it's better than just providing a letter, where they can actually have some open Q and A back and forth so that everybody that's there at that table can make an informed decision or an informed recommendation, I could say, as to what they believe the right course of action should or should not be. So that is what we're looking to do. And again, need to make sure that the new director of finance is on board with that particular piece because it just makes sense that all of these pieces work together. And they'll work together, I think, very harmoniously if we do this the right way and not necessarily the fast way. So that's, that's what I'm, that's what we're looking at there.
So are you, are you?
We're updating questions right now.
Are you asking the state to audit you? Is that, are you inviting the auditors in?
We're actually going to have some open comments at the end, so if we can just hold that one, please. Appreciate that. So from the board, any questions or concerns with that particular direction? Okay, in that case, we will move on to item 5.3. And that is the staffing update. And Scott here is going to come up and give us a second.
Good evening, everyone. Just kind of want to give you an update on where we're at with the staffing process right now. Again, you got a good idea of how it's done at the high school from Captain Stewart. It's a very fluid, ongoing process that happens through the month of March for our certified staff. We are now entering into the next month, six weeks, on our non-certified staff. So it's a, it's a long process in how we do this. And this year, with, with the budget adjustments that we, you know, we have to make, we went very conservative with our staffing in projecting FTEs for next year. I think we're all aware of that. And so in, in essence, several non-tenure teachers were told that they possibly will not have a teaching position next year. And that's approximately between 17 and 20. We also had some, and I can't really go too much into, based on performance, that's an ongoing thing every year when you, when you look at staffing. The good news is, and this is what I want to share, the good news here is that over the last week, we, we have a process where we've been able to bring back seven teachers. This is exciting. Because when you go conservative, because again, you heard Todd talk about, we don't know what the budget revenues are going to be next year. If it's 1.25, 1.5, or 2%, that affects how much staffing we can do because it is 85% of your budget. And we have to wait for those numbers to come in. But for right now, just to let you know, seven positions have been brought back in the last week. Now, our principals, we set up a process in which they're working with these. These are our non-tenure teachers that were notified that they, they may not be back next year or will not be back next year. Those teachers all have an opportunity to, have an, an opportunity to go for those positions. So let me tell you what positions we've brought back, so that the people in the audience know as well. At Pearson, we're bringing two positions back mainly because of grade in terms of enrollment in that building and looking at the class size. And then we also had one at Eagle Creek Elementary. We had a hotspot we had to address. And Sunpath was through someone resigning, so we are able to backfill that position. And then also kindergarten at Red Oak. Mitch Karin, his, his team has been out working with the parents on kindergarten registration and was able to verify the need for another kindergarten teacher. And I'll tell you right now, I'm working with all elementary principals. We have a couple of other elementary principals that are letting me know where their kindergarten numbers are as well for next year. It's very hard to project your kindergarten right now until those parents fill out the registrations, get them sent in. And just like every year, we, sometimes we hire in July, sometimes we hire in August. Last year, I came to the board, we hired two extra teachers last year just because more students showed up than we were expecting. So that's the good news on, on the. So that's the good news on, on the certified staff. Going into non-certified staff next year, or for next year, I'll be meeting tomorrow, actually, I start meeting with every principal. Julie Mendon in special services is a big part of this, because a lot of our non-certified staff are in supporting students in our special services. But I can tell you right now, we will not be laying off any non-certified staff. I know that there's people that have, well, we're laying off, we're not laying off any non-certified staff. We, we have a number of attrition, but if we do any adjustments, we definitely will have positions for all of our paraprofessionals, our custodians, our cooks, our clerical, all those, those positions in our district.
That would be safe to say that people might change positions, because you never know the needs of the kids?
Correct.
So even though somebody might say that your position isn't here anymore, but we know that we're gonna have more positions than we have people, we're gonna be hiring-
Oh, very true. We know that we're gonna have positions for people. It might not be the exact same position. In, in, in special services, Julie's students will, they go up from grade to grade, they might not need as much paraprofessional support. That's the goal, is you want students to become independent, needless of paraprofessional support, but we have new students coming in in kindergarten that might need paraprofessional support. So it's an ongoing flexibility in terms of where those staff are. You might have decisions made by a building principal, like Jeff talked about, on how to use their F team, where they might decide, rather than having pairs do intervention services, they would rather have a teacher do the intervention services. That's very common to make those decisions. If, if that happens, then we take those intervention pairs and they might be working with some of the special service students, but they wouldn't be laid off. That's very common, every year we do that with staffing.
Yes, sir, that question.
Yep. But our custodians are looking good, clerical's looking good, and again, we got the next six weeks, we'll be working on, on that process. And it's a long process, it, it's a flexible process, and every, every week we're adjusting staffing based on enrollment. So every week I ask Michelle Carpenter to pull the Mars numbers, and she pulls them, just like, this week, I'm, I'll be honest with you, I'm working with Doug Schleif right now on kindergarten numbers at Jackson. We're not pulling the trigger yet, but we're watching it very close, because he's got more kids starting to register. He, he'll email me, just got another packet. So those are the decisions we make, but we need to be cautious before we just say we're gonna throw a teacher there. But there's a good chance one will be there. But it's, we just need to make sure that those kids, the registration numbers come in. And then, right now, we're down to about 10 or less teachers that we're working through attrition, hopefully to bring all those teachers back. And so we're, we're looking good on that. And then, again, I showed you outlines of attrition over the last several years, I, I really feel good. But I can't guarantee it, because you don't know if licensure match is up or if it's the right fit for that teacher. If you're a kindergarten teacher and I need a fifth grade position, for instance, maybe there's a mismatch there. But we're doing the best that we can. We have openings still, even though we, we've gone through this process. You know anybody that can teach physics? Let you know, we have a posting out there for physics. Science teachers are always hard to find. I don't think any questions.
Scott, with kindergarten rounded coming up in the next few weeks, do you anticipate a spike in kindergarten registrations?
You know, it's, it's our enroll, remember, we're in a kind of a dip right now for the next couple of years in what our enrollment is showing for kindergarten, just because of the recession, babies, I think is the term I've heard used. However, we still have many families moving to Shakopee. And ever, if those that aren't, might not be aware, we, we opened a welcome center here last year, it was a great improvement to our district for families. And I'll tell you what, when you see the families coming in, and sometimes it's the week before school starts, it's not uncommon for 18 families in one day to come in and register. And so we just have to play it by ear, and then I come back to the board and said, we have a hot, like I did last year with Eagle Creek, and I know Josie's sitting right here, the board supported Eagle Creek in getting another teacher late last year, and was Jackson as well. Unfortunately, those are our two buildings that are at capacity, we ended up going through temporary classrooms to support those buildings. But that's an, that's an ongoing process. I see Stewart here, sitting here, last year we added almost a teacher to the high school late in the game, just because he calls me up, just like he said, they work with HR. Scott, I've got some hotspots here. We're, we're sitting at, too many kids in a particular class, I would love to add another section. And that's just an ongoing, fluid discussion throughout this whole process. So it's, it's, we'll continue to work through it, and I'll praise the board on where we're sitting, but I do, I do really hope for all of the teachers that got some, some news that we'll do, that we're all hoping for.
Any questions for Scott? Thank you, we know it's a lot of work, so, thanks a lot.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thanks, Scott.
Okay, let's move on to 5.4. Reggie has been giving an update on Fort NGL. Yes, very nice.
Yes, yes. So just a quick update on Fort NGL, next generation learning, if you all don't know that acronym. So this is the academy process, we're all keenly aware of that, but we have a steering committee that meets regularly, we had a meeting for the last week, I guess it was last week. And I just wanna provide a quick update on a few items, nothing in depth, it can certainly involve any questions you might have, but just, I was excited about a number of things that continue to go forward. We're on, and the train's moving full speed ahead, and so there's a lot happening relative to this, so just in no particular order. One of the things we're gonna do is we're actually, we had a tentative date to kind of have a celebration around the academy process and program in Fort NGL on May 9th. We're gonna move that to the fall. Now, we don't know precisely the date, but looking at the week of homecoming is ideally when we'd like to do it, for a number of reasons. I'm gonna talk about student ambassadors in a moment, but we're gonna have our student ambassadors in place, we're gonna have, obviously, our, obviously, our competition gym will be done. It's the new year, it's an exciting time. We're gonna have, just, it's a better opportunity, we actually think we're gonna have all of our champions in place, those are our academy champions, which I will talk about in a moment as well. So that's gonna shift to the fall, and I think it's a better timing for that. In terms of the master plan, we have an approved plan, and we are knee deep in the implementation process, I think Nancy's somewhere in here, who's driving that bus. But each one of the implementation plans, and if you recall when I shared that, we did, there's a whole series of tactics, they all have a identified leader, they're chunked out into three months, which I think is great, if you've never done planning. It's a bite-sized chunk, if you will, and so they can focus on what they're gonna accomplish in those three months, and then they move to the next item. So all that's ongoing, never fear that that's happening. One of the things that we are also looking at, well, I'll, I'll talk about academy champions. So as you know, we announced two that we have in place, it's a total of seven. We're not gonna talk about the other five yet, because we don't have, the analogy I use with Rod was that, you know, the fish is on the hook and they're not in the boat. So we're actively discussing with potential academy champions and sponsors for the latter term. For the other five, we are very confident about those, but until they've actually agreed with us and signed the dotted line, we're not gonna announce those. But that's another reason why we think holding off on the, the celebratory event until the fall when all those are in place, we're actively in discussions with those other five. We have two, and we're confident we'll get the other five in place. Student ambassadors, let me talk about that and go into a little bit of depth on this. So it's gonna be a great program, and I'm very excited, and Jeff did a wonderful job presenting that actually at the council meeting. But the teachers identified a leadership pool, if you will. This was not just who has the best grades, it wasn't just your, your standard group you always turn to. They said, who are the people we think would be great for this particular program? They identified in the number of, you know, 60 to 70, I wanna say, maybe more than that. And then they also put it out to the kids in the school and said, hey, anyone who's interested in this program, you know, please self-identify. So they had a meeting, and that's where the 60 to 70 came to. We had 44 applicants come out of that for student ambassadors, and we have selected, at this point, 10 sophomores. So sophomores on purpose, because they'll be seniors by the time the academy opens, to do this. They went through a group interview process, we were looking for kids who can interact, interact well with their peers, who can interact well with adults, because of the kinds of events that they're having them doing. It's a great process, but we're not gonna look back to ninth, eighth, and seventh, because you wanna have a pipeline of these, and so that they are gonna be ambassadors for their grades when they're in high school. So we're gonna have a whole program, these ambassadors, but the ambassadors will be in place, this initial group, come fall, so it's another reason why holding the celebratory event later makes sense. So they'll be doing some training this summer, but it just sounds like a phenomenal program. The kids are very excited, we're very excited about it as well.
Reg, what sorts of things will these ambassadors do?
Some of it's gonna be hosting events. Think of what, I was a student ambassador in college, I mean, you're, you're doing anything and everything that's flying the flag for Shakopee, or in this case, the academies. But one of the things that we do expect, and Dr. Thompson's talked about this many times, it's something that we did when we went to tour at other facilities, we're gonna have lots of people coming here, they're already asking about it, to say, what's the Shakopee way? How are you doing this? And you engage these students to basically be tour guides. So they're, they're hosting, talking about their own experience, they're taking adults from other districts, you know, around, and showing them the ropes, so to speak, so that kind of thing. But there will be other events that are district-wide events that we would tackle. I think that's yet to be fully fleshed out, Jeff and you need to add.
Yeah, I think on top of that, you think of right now, what we do in, in the winter and in the spring, we have Sabre Showcase. Well, we're still gonna have Sabre Showcase, but obviously you will have Academy Showcase. So those events where the community comes in, they see all the cool things, I can picture the ambassadors, picture an ambassador assigned to each of the different academies along with students who are, you know, doing demonstrations or things of that nature, that would be a world brand, you see our ambassadors playing a pretty big piece of the role too.
One other item that's critical to the way we're gonna make the academies a success is the community coordinator. This is in conjunction with the Chamber of Commerce, as you all know, in fact, that person will really be hired through the Chamber of Commerce, in office there. This depends, and I think folks know this about the academy process, it really is gonna depend and thrive on our interaction with the community, businesses of all types, of all types, to support the academies. Well, this is gonna be the individual who's going to be living and reading that, not just getting a champion signed up, so that their name's on the, you know, on the door. It's much more than that, it's the integration of people being in, serving as mentors, making presentations, serving as sites for internships and on and on. So that role is gonna be critical, and that process is ongoing. And I think the idea, Rod, if you correct, is to maybe have that in place as early as June, is the target. So that's, and then the last thing I wanna say, and actually, we have one of the chairs in the room, Tim Johnson, but really, I should've started by saying, I wanna thank our community members who are on this committee, because again, this isn't gonna happen without the involvement of the community. And we have a tremendous group, not just at the steering committee, we'll probably have 12 to 15 on that committee, but then we have industry councils, so all of the different academy councils, I should say, all of the different, even the academies have their own council, that are folks that are focused in that area. So we've got a lot of involvement, very exciting, stuff continues to go forward, and it's just, it's, it's neat to see it as it's being built, it's kind of the sausage making process, but the, the end product is really gonna be fantastic. So, any questions?
Is it fair to say that each academy, as far as the industry councils or academy councils, each academy has, right now, 10 to 20 members on their own industry council that are partnerships within the community who are helping to guide our curriculum and our processes?
In a word, yes. All of that, yes, yes, yes.
There was just an incredible amount of engagement from our community, I know.
And, and anyway, we would say to anyone who wants to be involved, you've got expertise in a certain area, please, we'll, we'll take more. But yes, they have been, and they are meeting regularly, they're, they're the backbone of what Nancy's doing in terms of, I mean, they're, they're helping to guide and shape the curriculum, because this is all about career, college, life-ready, and what better way to do it than to have the people there who say, you know, it's not just, can you type 60 words a minute, it's, it's about, how do you start a business? What's entrepreneurship? It's, you know, software, it's, it's things that you and I didn't think about when we were in school, it's entirely different. So having real-life people who live this day and day out are instrumental to the success in this program, and they're doing it now, which is wonderful. So thanks to people like Tim and others who are on these councils and on the steering committee.
I had an opportunity to meet with a member of the community a week or so ago, we got talking about the academy and, you know, academy in general, and this individual, without naming names, I'm so excited, he is, works for the TSA, he's also a former civilian, well, he does a lot of different, he's, he's got a background in the police force as well as military, and he's currently in the TSA, and we got to talking about things and how some of the knowledge that he has would be of incredible value, because he was sort of just asking, how can I help? And I, and the conversation went to a place where you have a unique combination of talents and skills and life experiences that our students would probably go crazy being able to hear. And of course, he wasn't quite ready to sign on the dotted line, but I, I'm gonna say that you know who you are, and that was an awesome conversation. That kind of conversation is, is what, you know, that, that's what this is all about, yeah, it is, it's just, the potential is just, it's awesome. Any other comments or questions for Reg? Okay, thank you, sir. Okay, let's move into item 6, old business action items, and Dr. Beazik is going to-
Give an update.
Give an update on-
Sure. Well, I'm gonna give a, give an update on construction, I'm gonna start with a proposal that we have coming from the city and was brought forward by the site committee, and we've talked about it. It's about partnering with the city on completing a baseball field over a top of field, or a top of park, or, everybody knows where that is, but in the course of the construction at the high school, we are losing a baseball field, and we have a budget line item in our, in our budget for about $150,000 to replace that field at a very base level. If you know the site, we're losing the baseball field that would be on the northwest corner where the new fieldhouse is going, I think there's a batting cage there, but that field is going away, and that was a very base level field, a practice quality field, basically a backstop and, and not much else, but, and, you know, you'll probably say, the costs, boy, the costs are a lot, to just replace a practice level field is about $150,000, that's what we have budgeted for that. Well, we wanted to make sure we got the best bang for our buck and met the needs of the baseball community and, and the city, so there was some conversation about, there's always been this desire to complete top, a spot there for a, a game quality field and a little legal field. Well, the city came to us and the baseball boosters came to us and said, hey, you know, instead of replacing another practice field, we could get a game quality field. So myself, I met myself, John Janki, the D, Tom Schlepper, met with the baseball boosters and met with the city, and we talked about, how could we complete that, how could we use the dollars we have allocated to the best of our ability? Do we wanna do something with ours space, or, 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 well, we could spend $150 and get a practice level field, or we could contribute the $150 in partnership with the city and the baseball boosters and get a game quality field with fencing and dugouts and all of that, and complete the top of, of complex, or get, get it close to complete. So that's what we are proposing to do, you know, you may have seen, there was an article in this, that the city had, you know, set it out for bids, and bids came back favorable, that if we would contribute our part and the boosters would contribute their part, we could get this to happen. So it's in line, and it's in line with what we had budgeted, so I'm making a recommendation that we approved $150,000 of capital funds to contribute to that joint project, get that baseball field completed at top of park.
Can we clarify, for anyone listening, that this $150,000 comes from the budgeted referendum dollars, not from our general budget?
It comes from dollars that we have allocated, yes, we have bought, we have capital dollars allocated in the, for the high school site, yes. So it's not like we're taking from something else, this is money that allocated to replace the baseball field.
I'll make a motion if we improve that, that allocation.
Second. All right, motion by Reggie, second by Matt. Any discussion? All those in favor? Signify to say a aye.
Aye.
Most points, same sign. What's your theories?
I don't know, they're gonna start, they're gonna start work this summer, so that's hopefully playable by the following summers.
I think it's, it's after that, sorry Scott, I should run this discussion, but I know Kat is here, and we should thank the city, you and Jamie in particular, for partnering with us and how we're gonna do this, and how we're gonna maximize, not only your dollars, getting the city's dollars, our dollars, but the, the school's dollars, so I think this is a great, great outcome.
Oh, another thing, I just would like to show a few pictures of the progress at the high school, so I'm gonna have you just scroll through, they're a little self-explanatory. You can see we got the south classroom tower that we have going in at the, at the high school site, and you've got an artist's rendering, this is kinda helpful in the actual picture of what's going on right now, but this is the third tower that's going up on the south side of the building, so you see what it'll eventually look like here. If you were scanning where the practice field is, like the practice football field on the south, looking to the north, this is that new tower that is going in, and over here would be the athletic entrance to the gyms. So, you can see that the, we've got three stories going up, things are progressing nicely. We gotta get another one, we got another one there, is that the next one? See, just another angle, looking at the staircases and, you know, increasing the, you know, some of the windows, and they're bringing in natural light, and you can just see the work that's going on. We've had a nice spring, so things again are progressing well. This is the activities entrance, this is what it will look like, all their glass, you'll enter from the west here, if you're coming in from the west, that would be the entrance, but you'll walk along the gym, and there'll be all these windows, you kinda see where they're at, you can see the infrastructure there, getting ready for that. Another one here, if you're coming in, again, from the west, this would be the entrance to the activities area, if you were going to the gym or you're going to the fieldhouse, the weight room would be out here, gym would be behind it, it's actually the fieldhouse off to the side, so you can just see the progress that is happening. And the fieldhouse, again, actually looks almost identical here. So, the fieldhouse basically has six basketball courts, or you can call them whatever else for reference, basketball courts going three, three, or two, two, and two, you know, so six courts. And then above that is an elevated running walking track, four lanes around the top of that, so our, you know, kids will be playing volleyball, basketball, down low, your track kids could be, you know, working out up top, or people could be walking from the community or whatever, it's gonna be a very nice flexible space for our students. And we could also, and one of the goals when we were doing this was, you know, the school of size is gonna be tough to be, you know, maybe make some of the teams, we wanna also be able to host intramural activities for kids as well at decent times, instead of having them getting the pass-off time. We're gonna have eleven courts in this facility, so the, you know, the sports teams can be played, but there's also gonna be spots where kids that are not on the sport, you know, the competition teams to be involved as well, so it's gonna be, we got a very nice piece, and I don't know what else to...
Can you tell us why is there a gap?
Yeah, they just kinda put the last section in, I think they're putting the decking for the tracks, I think they want to leave that open and get some machinery in there. Somebody asked when they're gonna close that, pretty soon, because they wanna get water tank before they start doing any flooring or anything like that. So, yeah, just another angle of the, of the building. And this is if you were coming into the, you know, coming into the activities, you came in the entrance and you're looking down one of the halls, and you see what it would basically look like in here. One of the corners of the game gym would be down here, the, at the end of the hall would be the fieldhouse, concession stand is right here, but you can't even get an idea of what it's gonna look, look like, the colors scheme, kind of layout. Again, another, if you were, this is again, if you were looking, coming in that entrance, looking down the hallway there, and then this view of the fieldhouse, you can see the basketball courts, a few bleachers, and then the track above the top. So, again, if you've been over to Eden Prairie, the fieldhouse is very similar in concept to that as well, if you have a chance to go over there. And the game gym, very similar to the game gym we have now, but our current game gym is becoming part of the common, so we could increase, you know, the passing of lunch and all of that, so we had to replace the game gym, and again, see what that looks like. Oh, and then just one more shot here, just kinda tells you, this is actually new, kind of beginning of new spaces, the outside of the building, if you're looking currently from the west at the, at the building, this would be an outside wall, and this stuff is new coming out. So, right here has had a new space, but looking, you're looking back into the old game gym, which is becoming part of the commons, and, and back in, you can see the common back there, so it just kinda shows the connection of the building, it's kind of an architectural feature that's available, like in the, kind of a circular opening that is there. So it just kinda, you can see what is going on, kinda, you know, structure, mind what's happening up there. And we're trying to mitigate noise and all that, you know, once everyone's off, you got kids there, you know, they're gonna hear an occasional thump or some kind of, you know, I'm not gonna say you're not gonna hear anything, you're not gonna be in convenience, they are, the kids are flexible, they, they may be, so. I think that was the last one.
That was the last one.
Hey, you guys got any questions?
We're on track?
Yeah, we are on track. You know, and I always say we're on track, and we're, you know, you know what's gonna show us when we're on track? What's gonna show us when we're on track is that game gym has to be ready for the first volleyball game in the fall, so I can tell you we're on track, all you wanna hear, you're gonna know we're on track or not on that first volleyball game, better play on that court, that's right on track.
I would agree, but I would say for the benefit of the box, we meet every two weeks, we are on schedule, we are on budget, for the benefit of everybody, does wanna hear you say that.
Yes.
I'm saying, so...
But if they want that hard check, they could go and get their ticket and be there for the game and sit there and watch the game on that too.
And BOP gets together again in two weeks.
Wednesday.
Okay, anything else for Dr. Bezek? All right, thank you, sir. Now, item seven, new business. This is a fun one, and I'm going to hand the floor over to the quiet Dr. Thompson, who is not in full voice tonight, and it has nothing to do with anything that happened at Sweeney either. So, I'm just gonna let you take it away.
Sure, thank you. Last Friday, we had the opportunity over at Eagle Creek to be, have Josie and her staff recognized by the Minnesota School of Excellence Award, and it's established through the Minnesota Elementary School Principals Association. And one of the real cool parts was when you, first of all, when you loaded up that gym, it really gives you a wonderful idea of how many students and staff are in Eagle Creek. And we had the opportunity to have a wonderful program. The cheerleaders were over from the high school, which really got the kids excited. We had a national anthem, I think by two fifth graders, the trumpeters, that was just fabulous, and it was just so fun. And then we had an opportunity to hear also from the executive director of your organization, and he talked about how many schools, elementary schools, that really are in Minnesota, and what a wonderful honor it is, I think he said you were one of seven.
One of seven this year, and there are nearly a thousand schools in Minnesota, elementary schools.
Yeah, and so, this is kind of like coaching your own child in sports sometimes, you're almost harder on your own student or your own athlete. In this case, it's a peer review, which I think is a really neat thing, where all of the principals and the committee that selects has to look at all of those and then come up with final recommendations for the group. And so, I had a, I had the opportunity to be a part of that, and I think on behalf of the board and myself, we just wanna say a huge congratulations. The theme really was, "It takes a village," and "It takes a family to make that happen," and you really, you really made that clear that day. Everybody was involved, every single group, the teachers did a wonderful job too, including the songs and the dancing, and it was, it was just fabulous. So, with that...
With that, we have a small token. It's beautiful, I'd say, it's a little bit of a praying, but it's pretty heavy.
Yeah, just kinda celebrating myself.
Yes, we are incredibly honored to present this to you.
Thank you.
And to see it hanging proudly in the halls of Eagle Creek, that was strong. Do I? Thank you.
Thank you. Could I share a couple of pictures?
Please, please.
Yes. So Dr. Thompson said it so succinctly, but it was really a three-year process for us, so it didn't happen in that short little speech he gave, it was, it was a pretty awesome deal. And it's something that any elementary school can choose to participate, can choose to participate in, but it is a self-reflection process, and so it's very time-intensive for the staff, and so that's why, yeah, I was, sorry, thank you.
Jump in, do it quicker, sorry.
It's a process where we did a self-reflection, and then we did, celebrated what we were doing well, and then we looked at where we could improve, and then we made a plan for improvement, and then we implemented that plan, and then we reflected on the plan and said, "What went well with our implementation, and what do we still need to work on?" And then we submitted that to MASP, the Minnesota Elementary School Principals Association, and they gave us some feedback, and they asked us some, some questions, and they said, you know, "Tell us more about these parts of your application." And then we resubmitted it to them, and then we waited to see if we were validated or not. So it was a longer process, you could do it in one year, we took two years, because we really wanted to truly implement what we said we were going to do on the plan, we didn't wanna just kinda, you know, say we're gonna do this and then not really. So, it was, it was really, really neat. Those who were involved in the committee know it inside and out, and the rest of it have, the rest have really enjoyed the ride. Once we went through the process, you, you develop a celebration, because you really wanna bring your community together, and so we did, oh, sorry. So we did the celebration Rod talked about, but then in the evening, we had a red carpet event, and that's what I really wanted to share a couple of pictures from. Okay, let's see if this works again. Okay. So this was our gym full when Rod was there, we had our program, and we were able to bring risers over from all the other elementaries, and we sat our fourth and fifth grade on the risers, only two grade levels fit, and then we put our K-one, two, three students on the ground, and it really helped everyone feel like they were part of what was going on there. And there I received an award, and then we went into the evening, and at five-thirty, we have spaghetti dinner for our entire school. Ended up, they told us our plate count was one thousand forty-eight plates per. That is a lot of people, and informally talking with people in the hallways, there were many that chose not to eat because they were intimidated by the line, so I'm guessing we were well over eleven hundred people there that night. The high school jazz band came over to give evening entertainment, and it was awesome. We had a photo opportunity, you know, it was a red carpet event, that was our theme, and so we had like the crowns and the props and the mustaches and the red carpet there for families to take pictures. We had a DJ, Minnesota Superior Sound provided free DJ for our kiddos, and so we had dancing, and they had a great time there. And then we asked our staff to dress up, and, you know, these are just a couple of pictures of our staff with the award and really being excited to be dressed up, and the kids were, and they even took a red carpet picture there. We did a Saber Showcase, we took the idea from the high school, and we had student work displayed, and you could walk around and see the student work, and the teachers were prideful, and the kids were prideful, it was awesome to see. We were Eagle Creek, but we really made it a Saber event, we tried not to be Eagle Creekers, we tried to be Shakopee Sabers, and so that was awesome. A little bit, a few more pictures of what was going on in some of the student work. Then we gave all the kids, because if you watch television, or maybe some of you have entered a red carpet event, but I haven't, but I watch them on TV, they get like little gift bags, so we went swag bags, thank you. So we went with Shakopee Saber, again, instead of Eagle Creek, because we are part of the Shakopee. The kids got a little cup, and it changes colors when it's warm, it's a lighter color when it's cool, it's a darker color. Big hit with the kids, big hit with the kids. And then we have a parent connected to Nickelodeon Universe in the HR department, she gives eighteen hundred tickets that are mystery tickets, that we were able to put two in every day, and so they have six, boys, all the way up to a family pass, you don't know until you go use it, so the kids are like, oh, pumped. And then they got a cute little T-shirt with the Minnesota School of Excellence logo on it, and then "School of Excellence" on the back. And we'll wear these every Wednesday for the remainder of the year, to show our pride and to show what was happening at Eagle Creek. And I just wanna share a couple of quotes, I asked my teachers, I put a Google Doc out there, and they shared some quotes and different things, like the students, "This was the best party ever," and the teacher said, "It was great to see parents dressing up with the kids," and a student, "This is the best day ever," and "It's so fun to see all the amazing student work, and this is an amazing award for our school, and these fourth graders really went all out on this project." And this is my favorite, my dad couldn't get off work in time to bring me, but I found a ride from a friend. Like, that is so cool. That was just cool, like they cared so much to come to our school and celebrate, they even got a ride from a friend. So, this is just a sample, there's hundreds of more quotes out there from, from people. But I encourage any principal at the elementary level to really go through the process. It was a huge morale booster for Eagle Creek, for the staff, for the family, for the kids, they're still talking about it today, we left up the displays, some kids that didn't make it were able to look at the displays, so just a really neat, neat event. And it couldn't have happened without the support of the school board superintendent signing off at the beginning, saying we could even go through the application process. So thank you for your support, it really, really mattered, and we had a great time at Eagle Creek. Lots, I just was highlighting some of the people that gave us donations to make that event, so. Any questions, or, I know I talk super duper fast, but I'm super excited.
We're all excited.
So, and I sent to Ashley some pictures, so hopefully we're in the paper, get some...
Can you hand it over?
Get some joy for Eagle Creek, because the, the teachers work really hard, and sometimes the test scores don't always show it, but relationships are number one at Eagle Creek, and this is just one example of how that really shines, that it matters that you care about kids, and it matters that kids care and know that you care about them, so.
Thank you. All right, good stuff. Okay, let's move on to item eight, new business action items. First up, eight point one, Tony and/or Reg is going to give a policy slash finance.
Yeah, Reg and I talked about it, and since this is kinda based on the finance part, Reg is gonna take over.
All right.
So I get to follow that, which is not nearly as fun. So, as you all know, our practice is whenever we have something substantive in nature, we always wanna have a first reading followed by a second reading, so there's time to, you know, reflect on it if there are comments or what have you from the public, you can certainly get it. You'll also recall, hopefully, if you were paying attention to me at the last business meeting anyway, when I gave a finance update, I said that we had met with PFM Asset Management. PFM is the organization that we have hired, and we hired them a number of years ago, they manage our OPEB fund balance. I think you all know what OPEB is, but if anyone doesn't who's watching, OPEB is Other Post-Employment Benefits, it is a fund that a prior board set aside funds to fund post-employment benefits obligations we have for retired health care. We created that many years ago, we've invested it very conservatively, and what we are bringing forward tonight, you all have copies of this, the only, I will call your attention, the only change, the policy itself, which is 705 Investments, we're not changing the nature of the policy, it's page nine in the appendix, it's the asset allocation. We have currently been invested in a thirty-seventy ratio, and if any of you talk to your own financial planner, or you do this on your own, usually you talk about weighting between equity investments and fixed income investments. In our case, it is heavily weighted towards fixed income, which is more conservative, you would kind of expect that, but we've been missing an opportunity, we think, and in consultation with PFM and some data I'm gonna share with you, we are making a recommendation to change our targeted investment posture from the thirty-seventy ratio of equities, fixed income, to a fifty-fifty ratio. And just to give you some comfort, in case it does give you any pause, I'm certainly happy to answer questions, but PFM has in the school realm, two-hundred-and-forty-four districts that they manage their funds for. Making this move, we are currently in the bottom ten percent, and what I mean by bottom ten percent is the weighting is, we're very, very low. Most districts, ninety percent plus, are more aggressive than we've been. So we think it's time to take advantage of that, we are making a step to fifty-fifty, we're still not gonna be half the fifty-point mark, most people are still gonna be beyond that, but we think it's prudent to make a move as we're doing now, we can always choose to be more aggressive in the future. So what I'm bringing forward tonight is a change to Policy 705, specifically item three, D-three in the appendix, it's changing our asset allocation, and these are ranges, but ultimately it's gonna be a fifty-fifty split. We don't dictate, and by the way, in case, it's not like we pick winners, we don't pick McDonald's or John Deere or Exxon, everything's a mutual fund of some form, that's the wise thing to do. But it's to change our asset target ranges to allow for a fifty-fifty split. So if there's any questions, I'll take those, but ultimately what I'm gonna ask us to do is to approve this as a first reading, we have the time now to consider it, think about it, debate it if so be, and then come back at our next business meeting and make that second reading approved. Any questions?
I'll make the motion to approve the first reading.
I'll second it.
All right, motion made by Matt, second by Sean, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those close the same side? Okay, who's your chair, is on the first reading? Take that. All right, now we're going to move on to eight point two, district health insurance update. Would you like Mr. Hare back up? Would you like Mr. Hare back up?
Thank you. So we have an insurance committee that meets every month for the district, and every, so often, we have to go out for an RFP, for insurance vendor, and then we became self-funded almost two years ago now, we're in our second year. And because we're self-funded, we have to choose a vendor to take care of our health insurance, and then we also have to set our own rates. So it's not like an insurance company is setting rates, we set our own rates. So the insurance committee met today, and Dale is sitting over here as well, and he sits on the insurance committee, and we reviewed all of the information we needed to review. This is our second go-around in setting rates. I want to go through some things with you and then get your approval for us to move forward. So one of the things, the first thing we'll do is go with preferred one. Preferred one is who we currently are with for the last two years. This will be for the next three years, is to stay with preferred one. They had the best administrative rates compared to all of those that responded to the RFP, to the insurance committee. They also had second chances to go back in this process and give us a best offer, and preferred one still remained the best offer for our insurance company in terms of providing our health benefits for the next three years. The other thing we looked at would be the rates for our health insurance. We have one plan, it's called our 300 plan, and for those that look at insurance as really your gold plan. And in fact, many, many districts have moved away from that plan, many companies have moved away from those types of plans, are very expensive health insurance plans. Our insurance committee has agreed to go one more year with that plan, and then that plan will no longer exist. And to help encourage members to move from that plan sooner, because it is a very expensive plan, and it has cost led to our health insurance self-funding, they recommended a 15% rate increase to the 300 plan. So that would encourage members to go with different plans. For the remainder of the plans, which is our 1,200 plan, our 2,600 plan, and our 5,000 plan, would only be a 5% increase. Now, this is good news to our employees, and let me tell you why. Medical inflation right now is running 6% to 8%. We didn't have a great year, our first year in self-funding, and this year, we're having a good year. You know, it ebbs and flows depending on your employees and medical, their need for medical insurance and so forth, but we're having a pretty good year this year. So we're very comfortable in setting the rate for 5% for the remaining plan, so 15% for the first plan, and then 5% for the other three plans. So I need that approval, but then I also have one other approval that I would ask. We also got our RFP for our long-term disability and our life insurance. So the insurance committee went through that this evening as well, before this meeting, and have chosen to go with Lincoln to provide our LTD as well as life. Now, there's always good news when things happen, that we can look and say that we're going to make some savings for the district. But over the next three years, making that move saves the district approximately $100,000. So that's a good, a win-win for the, for the district to remain with a good carrier in terms of providing services for LTD and life insurance for our employees. So I'd be looking along with the approval of the preferred one, 15 and 5% would also be an approval then to go with Lincoln, because that is a change in vendor for LTD and their life insurance.
So, I think we can put them together. I don't know that we need to do them separate, we can do them separate procedurally, but I'm, I'm trying to put it together. Are there any questions for Scott, my colleague?
I would like to just, I could, before you give us approval, thank the insurance committee. They do a lot of work. They're representative of the administrative group, the teacher group, custodial group, clerical group, paraprofessional group, related services. All of the groups are representative, and they work as a team, and it's, I, I'm just very proud of that group, because they have to make some tough, difficult decisions for their members, and we had some real lively discussion on setting rates, and I think in the end, it came at the consensus, and they worked really good together, and I just, I need to say thank you to that group for their time and effort.
Okay, I don't know if I want to try to read this back exactly, so.
I can give a shot, which I can.
Yes, because I know we had some changes, so why don't you give us what the motion?
A recommended motion would be to approve the selection of preferred one as the district's health insurance carrier, approve the selection of Lincoln as a long-term disability and life insurance carrier, and approve the rate adjustments as presented.
So moved? All right, moved by Matt, second by Angela. Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those who pull the same sign? Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Hare.
Thank you.
And thank you, Sarah, for giving that back. All right, now we're going to go on to eight point three. This is a new line item, and it somewhat speaks for itself, but I'm going to read a prepared statement that was given to us by our district attorneys. Our attorney that represents the district is Knutson, Flynn, and Dean, and this is a statement that they provided that will help to outline what eight point three actually means. Recent events suggest that as an organization, we should pause and look deeper into our system and our operations. To facilitate this, an outside investigator will be meeting with employees to obtain greater insight into our overall organizational health. This will allow us to determine where we are and whether any changes should be made as we look into the future. That is the prepared statement. I feel that literally to add any more to that would be to potentially and unnecessarily disrupt the investigation that's going to take place. Therefore, I am not going to add any more commentary than this. So I am seeking approval from the board to authorize Knutson, Flynn, and Dean to enter in an agreement with Nuvest for the purpose of conducting a third-party investigation into the overall organizational health of the district.
I don't make that motion.
I second it.
Um, by Sean, second by Tony. Any discussion? All those in favor, simply try by saying aye.
Aye.
All those who pull the same sign? Motion carries. All right, now, we move on to item nine, which is recognition of visitors to board meeting. Normally, that's something that we do at the front of the agenda, but we anticipated that there may be some folks who may want to, to speak to the board, and although as a regular, you know, point, we normally don't engage back and forth, but as a board, we all feel that continuing the dialogue makes sense. So although I'm going to recommend that we not go four hours tonight if we can, if that's okay, I'd like to go ahead and let's open it up for maybe another 20, 30 minutes. If folks are interested in addressing the board, if we can, you know, again, enjoy some of the open dialogue, I would just ask you to come up to the clipboard, go ahead and sign in, as, as is customary, and we'll just go ahead and, and address any comments that you have one in mind.
Hello, board members. Superintendent, my name is Jordan Olson. I live in 249 Mount Street here in town. I guess I have a couple of questions. I'm not going to take up too much of your time tonight, okay? I'm not going to drill you really that hard, but I do, I wanted to go back a few line items on the agenda to this financial advisory committee. That's where I want to start. My first question is, I guess, why do you think you need a financial advisory committee? And if, and after that, my next question would be, is it not true that when you win an election as school board, you actually are required to take some sort of a finance course for a day? If that's not your, that's what I, that's how I understand it. And, and, and three, going back, you just said it. I apologize, I just wanted to go back and correctly refer myself on the agenda. Oh, yes, this person you're, who's going to be investigating you from the outside, are you hiring them? And if so, how much is that going to cost? Those are my questions.
Okay, so two questions. The first one I'll take, and certainly this is not anything that I need to capitalize on, the formation of that particular advisory group, which we don't know exactly what they'll be called ultimately, is in two parts. One is, again, Suzanne, who's going to be a new director of finance, she does this in her existing district, and it's a very, apparently a very smart model, it's quite something, frankly, something we haven't done here, and it's, it's new to us. And in light of the budget situations that we have found ourselves in as a district, we felt relatively strongly, based on, you know, a lot of community feedback, that this is just another way that we can offer an opportunity for individual community members to come in a lot closer to what the process really looks like and get a better understanding of the entire, you know, the entire process. What, what that group ultimately does or doesn't do, that the fun thing is, I think we all kind of get to build that together, to figure out what makes sense, and what's the kind of information that, that group's looking for, what's the kind of information they want to take back to the community. So it'll be a process, just like any other advisory council that we have, that'll be developed, and I'm sure it'll, it'll transform over time and ultimately become something that the community can be, can be proud of.
Okay, can I add, before we move on to the other question? Jordan, so you recall that Monday night, I presented a slide, talked about the things we're trying to do to prevent these candidations happening in the future, one of which was we were going to explore this. So we still have additional legislation to do, so they've figured out what are they going to do, how they're going to perform with their purposes, et cetera. But we believe that in the spirit that word is used a lot, transparency, this is another way to do that. And while the N is small, the number of people that I've met with, and I've had this kind of, we're all meeting the people that answer questions in dialogue. This has been brought up by myself on a number of occasions, and I think universally, the answer is, sure, it sounds like a good idea. I mean, it's kind of like, what is it going to be? You're also looking to learn that. But we don't think we can go wrong with this. It's certainly something that allows us to engage the public on a topic that is very pertinent right now, and we expect to be pertinent long-term. So if we have a group who has expertise in this area, who wants to work with us and provide counsel and advice and recommendations to us, we don't think we can do any harm. In fact, it can be a very good thing.
You're just answering my first question right now?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yes, perfect.
Okay. I mean, isn't that why we elected you as a board, though? Isn't that, aren't you supposed to be the financial advisory board? You're the board of?
No.
You're the school board.
No.
You're the school board, you don't, you don't oversee the finance director?
The answer to your second question is, you go through two phases of training when you're a new board member.
Yes.
It's a day each, and it's multi-tuned topics. You do not come out of this as a CPA. School finance is extremely complicated. So no, you don't come out of this as some expert in school finance. Absolutely, we have the responsibility to oversee the budget, but that is not something that I think that, I'm kind of connecting the first two questions. This body would be a group who have expertise in the area of finance, and there's a lot of people who, when they made their comments, they talked about what they did or their background. We're hoping those people come forward and say, yeah, I'd like to be part of this, because if we can benefit from their knowledge, their expertise, we're only going to be better, better served. They're not going to make decisions. That's what we're elected to do. We're elected to be the oversight bodies of the school, and we do that tonight and every meeting. So I guess I'm confused how it would be harmful, if that's what you're thinking?
Yeah, I'm not throwing a harmful, I'm just.
Okay, well, we think it's a positive thing, but we still need to see how it's going to take shape over time. But the answer to your second question is, we all went through it, there's other things you can do, but it's, it's, it's not great in-depth extensive training, because school finance is so complex, in terms of funding sources in particular. But you don't come out of there with a mini MBA on balance sheet analysis or.
Sure, yeah. Understood, and like I said, I'm not going to take too much time. Okay, that's the first two questions. Third question, this guy who's going to be investigating you. Who is this, again? And are you, you're hiring him? As a school board, you're hiring him, and what is that going to cost? Or her, excuse me.
A, I don't know if it's him or her. That's, the important thing with this process is, and I'm using the term sterile, the most, the most important thing that we can do as a board and as a district is to stay away from it. We have initiated, our attorney has given them official authorization as of tonight, based on our motion, to engage this organization. That organization will then, based on how they conduct their business, engage Shakopee Public Schools in a manner which they feel they need to. I actually know very, very little about what's about to happen, and that's probably for the best, that we know very little about what they're going to do. This is what they do for a living. They know what to do, they said, we understand what you're looking for, you need to say no more. Well, we got it from here.
Do you know how much it costs?
The only number that I can give you, to be honest, is their particular hourly fee is $275.
And you don't have, you don't know how many hours they're probably going to spend? Okay, what's the name of this organization?
Nuvest.
One more time?
Nuvest.
Nuvest, it's here. Yeah, I apologize, I'm just asking.
It's mutual investigation.
I'm looking at their cases, I didn't want to look at mine. I thought it'd be rude if I looked at my paper, I'm sorry. So, okay, so it's.
And if you don't know what it's like, you're welcome to.
Yeah. So we don't know how much money this is going to cost. But you're hiring them, just the board is actually entering into a contract with this organization, is that correct?
I'll take that a step further and say that our legal firm that represents the district is going to enter into that on behalf of the board. That is even more arms-length. I'm not sure we can get any farther with this one.
No, no, that answers my question. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
I'm Tim Johnson. I do have two questions. The first is, can you all confirm for me that you will not be $9 million in the hole next year during this current fiscal year, instead of 4.5? Can you please confirm that for me?
Yes.
You can 100% confirm?
Yes.
That the numbers will never, ever show that we're going to be $9 million in the hole, is that right?
Yes.
Okay, ask and answer. The second is this, it's not a question, it's a comment. You guys are in between a rock and a hard place with the question that Jordan asks you. There's a contingent of folks in this town that are going to force you or try to force you to do investigations. They cannot simultaneously yell at you for spending the money to do so. Do not let that happen to you. So you're right, one, or I'm wrong, one was a question, one's a comment. If folks want, you audit it. If folks want, you investigate it. We have to pay for it. End of story. Okay? So please, as a citizen, do not be bullied and told you've got to do them both, and then you're damned if you do, damned if you don't. Okay? Know that there are people who understand what it is you need to do, who understand the mistakes that you have made, are not happy necessarily about those mistakes, but know that you are trying to fix them. If you have to pay for it, we have to pay for it, and that's a good thing. Thanks.
What's that, yeah? Does that count?
Just quickly to clarify, I actually wanted to stand up here and recognize the wonderful things that we heard tonight. You know, it's admittedly the first one of these that I've been to, lived it my entire life, I've lived it for 15 years, but thankfully, I've been engaged here in the last six weeks or so. I wrestled when I was a kid, never got to state. I got fourth, actually, but, so I'm thankful that there's five wrestlers up here, I can't swim a leg, I sit like a rock, so. But there are some amazing things that have happened in this district. I used to drive my kids to this district for four years when I lived in Prior Lake, because I loved Red Oak, I loved him when I was there. There are some amazing people in this room. There's no question that the right things are happening within the district. Couple of quick points, specifically, before I hammer on the money, because that's all I technically know a lot about. Specifically, I would say the idea for Nuvest, and that being a, a new idea for everyone in the room at the same time.
Love it.
I think it's great, I don't care how much it costs. If the culture's bad here, fix it. If it's great here, shut everybody up. That's my opinion. It's the exact same thing when it comes down to money. State auditor, I don't care how much it costs. If it's bad, fix it. If it's great, it shuts everybody up. If it's great, it shuts everybody up. 100%, me included. That's all it is. And to be specific about the money, 5.2. Very quickly this evening, 1.8 million was talked about, but there wasn't any questions from the board for a amount of clarification. And I think that's oversight this evening. I would like to get specific to the questions about the 1.8 million as regards to, is that the savings off of the 4.5? Is that the last portion that is going to be shorted? Because again, to be very clear, 5.3 million was lost last year. 4.5 million was a budgeted loss this year. That is 9.8 million dollars. And now currently, we're hoping to be at 1.8 this year. Is that it?
I'll take that, Scott. So the 5.3 round last year was not lost?
5.332.
Yeah, it was not lost. Okay. And no, seriously, Gene, that's not, I don't think it's a fair characterization. We spent, we got services for all that. It wasn't wasted, it wasn't stolen, it wasn't missing. It was overspent, you could call it that, you can call it underbudgeted. But that was FY16. That's done. We found out after the fact. You couldn't change it.
100%.
Okay, so we've had this dialogue, so we know that. The four and a half shortfall is a projected shortfall for this year. It's a projected shortfall. We're not going to let that happen. We're in the process of fixing it. I want to make sure Todd's here and Scott's somewhere in the back. So I hope I have the numbers right and go correctly if I'm mistaken. We continue to be in the process of fixing the 5 point, the 4.5. Make sure I get my numbers right. We believe we have solved 3.3 of that, for sure. We are still taking steps to narrow that 4.5 as much as possible. All right, so we aren't there yet, but we can be. Because some of the things that you're going to do are going to still happen in the remainder of the year. So I can't tell you, are we going to solve every 4.5 nickel of that? Or is it going to be 4.2, or is it going to be 4.? I don't know. We don't know. There's no way to know at this point, but we're continuing to try to do that. The 1.8 you heard is a reflection that our projection is, with our current fund balance, unassigned fund balance.
Sure.
Okay, so let's make sure we're talking apples and oranges, or apples and apples here. The unassigned fund balance, when we started this year, was 2.5. Is that what it's called? Is that right?
Right, so it's number two.
Okay, 2.5. We are projecting that we'll probably be in the neighborhood of 1.8 when this year is done. So part of the solution is that we're going to have to get into that fund balance. Because we've said, as I said that Monday night, is it's a quick, can we just lock people off to most of the personnel?
Sure, we could.
But we don't think that's the right thing to do. So we're going to try to solve it in ways that are as efficient as we possibly can. But our projection is, we're probably going to tap into the fund balance to the 200, whatever the math is, $700,000 or so. That's what the expectation is, right now. That's going to change, that's what we need on every month. It's actually improved the last two months. We're talking tens of thousands of dollars, not huge swings. But we need on that every month, if we look, what's the projection of fund balance? But that's what the projection is right now.
So to recap.
Yes.
Budget variance is overspend, underspend. 5.3 million negative last year.
In 16?
16.
Yes.
I understand 1,000% that it was after the fact that it was going to fade out.
Yep.
And we can banter back and forth about whether that should have been caught, et cetera. But that was 5.3 million. This year's 4.5.
Projected.
Projected. To be closer to like maybe 1.2 million because of all the work we've done.
We think it was less than that, yes.
Takes a ton of work to shave off that much without...
Especially halfway through the year.
Yeah. It's a lot of work. That being said, so 5.3, so we're talking budget errors, and that's what we're excited about. 5.3 and say maybe, maybe two this year, maybe five?
No, it would be less than that, but that's where we're currently at today.
Six, six and a half, something along that?
If it ended there, I suppose you could look at it that way, yes. Yeah.
Again, that's one of the points that you and I talked about was transparency during the transparency meeting was everyone focused on the idea that it was 4.5 million. But at the end of the day, it was much larger. And you guys have had to work your ass off to get to here, pardon my language, but to get to here, just to give it to around $6 million. But the one thing that's been reported is four and a half. So I'm just 100% asking for transparency.
Well, and I appreciate that, and I obviously chime in here if you want. I agree with you, but I disagree with how you're characterizing it. I don't think we've hidden the 5.3. That was what came out of the audit. You just couldn't change it. You're taking that 5.3 and the projected shortfall this year, which is true. And you're combining. And I'm not going to mathematically disagree with you. We just don't know what the shortfall's ultimately going to be. But it's going to be more than 5.3 unless we can solve the whole 4.5. And we're projecting it to be probably in that neighborhood of $700,000 in terms of the impact on the fund balance.
That's different, though. Impact to fund balance or no?
It, the fund balance is made up of a lot of different things. It depends on where it comes from. So it depends on where we end our spending and where our revenue ends. That would be the actual individual FY17 impact. But in terms of the impact on the fund balance, again, to Jordan's comment, it's very complicated in terms of the different buckets that go into fund balance.
I would like to add that the 5.3 in FY16, not all of, I don't know how to characterize it in my words, but some of that was very planful spending because the initiatives that we are taking right now, the academies, the curriculum changes, a lot of what we're doing require investments. And so some of our fund balance was planfully spent down in order to invest in what we want our school district to be. So it's hard for me to say that we wastefully spent 5.3 million when I don't see it all that way. Does that make sense?
Oh, 100%.
Sorry, John Vokel, I just have to respond to Gene's comment about adding it together. I think you don't look at business and say, GM lost 20 million last year and 40 million this year, so they lost 60 million this year. It's two different items. And you have to look at, in the process of business, and schools are different than business, but you have to look at it and say, you plan a budget. You think you've done it the best you can. But things happen, things come up. And you're talking about the 5.4 theory from last year. As I look at that, that's no different than R and D, research and development. And that's what we're doing. We're researching and developing a better product, a better school system to get our students, our kids where they need to be. If you look at, and I've shared this with Rod, when we moved here, Kathy and I moved to Shakopee. Shakopee was known as the worst, one of the worst schools in the nation. It was in number 10, in the top 10 for most violent at the junior high level. We've come a long ways from that. That's what we have to look at, is this is research and development. So I think we can talk about budget numbers, but keep in mind that even as an accountant, I don't always plan the best budget. Because there's things that I don't know. I can't control how much research and development is going to go into building a better product. That's all I have to say.
I'm Glenn Solander, and I'm running Shakopee. I spoke at the last meeting, if you remember me. I'd just like to reiterate a couple of things. One is that I truly believe that the school district is the main, in fact, it's your entire purpose is to educate our kids. And part of that is every single cent you spend has to be to support kids and provide value-addedness to their education. And I hope you can all agree with that because I'd like to discuss it with you if you don't. And where I'm going with this is that I want to know what types of activities or what types of checks and balances are you going to be putting in place in the future to prevent the fund balance from going any lower? Because I know that if you do, you know, the state of Minnesota is going to frown on that very, very heavily. So what I'm wondering is, if you have a budget and it looks like, you know, it's good, and something comes up, what type of a stopgap measure are you going to put in place to stop it immediately at that point? Time out, let's discuss this and figure out how are we going to cover that in the future? And I think the financial committee will hopefully help that. But I don't think that has the immediacy where, you know, we need to spend so much money on a catered meal or something. That, to me, is not helping the students. I don't know how you could say that it is. Or something comes up and you need to buy a new desk or something when yours is okay. Well, you know, the students are sitting at some desk that aren't as good. How are you going to come up with that? Or what kind of a stopgap measure is, what do you put in place to prevent this from the future? And to make sure that moving ahead, we don't have a six-year decline like we have in the past of the fund balance? I don't know if you have any response to that or...
Well, I'm not sure we can lay out a strategic plan. Or I wouldn't want to try to articulate that because we haven't, you know, got together as a group to do that. I can, I will start off by saying partnering very, very closely with our new director of finance, Suzanne. And this is, I'm glad you mentioned this, I kind of want to throw one thing out. In light of our current situation, you'll notice that, I'll just use Reg as an example. Reg is doing a lot of heavy lifting for us right now. Reggie is not our director of finance in Shakopee Public Schools. Scott Swans is not the director of finance. We're doing the best we can in our elected roles to continue to further the financial healing and whatnot of the district without, honestly, without a captain, without that captain. That's a very, very key part. So right now, it's tough for us to be able to say, this is what the strategic plan is going to be. I am super excited for Suzanne to come in here, not because we're incapable of making decisions, but we need the financial expertise and guidance of that individual who comes to the district and whose sole purpose is to just do that very, very thing. Because she's going to be able to bring perspective. She'll be able to see what we've done, what's happened to the district, what's been successful for her. And we'll be able to, between looking at, you know, the community involved, we'll be able to pull all kinds of different ideas and whatnot together to ultimately figure out, what do we look like going forward? I wouldn't want to try to tell you what all of those items look like because honestly, I don't know that.
You know, and we're at a point as a district where we're not the best place to be. But I don't think that it would be in anybody's benefit to allow things to get worse. And what's happened has happened, it's kind of water under the bridge. But like I always tell my kids, it's okay to make a mistake, but word from it, don't repeat it. So what I'm asking is, please, please, learn from this or look at it and analyze it and do not make the same things again. Keep going forward. Don't allow this to happen. And again, if something comes up out of the budget, I know that happens. I mean, I'm an intelligent person, I understand that. But stop, don't overspend. Talk about it, figure out where the money has to come from. Because I don't want this to be a SOD district. I don't think anybody else does either. Thank you.
I think you'd all agree with me.
We do all agree with you.
Hi, my name is Leo Woody. I'm in 1798 Fox Run. And one thing that I want to just say or discuss is something that hasn't been discussed during the last meeting or here, and it's impact of all of this on you and your families. I made mistakes in my life, everybody else did. And when I did, I didn't want people to treat me like you've been treated over the last month or so. You know, here, we're in a room full of educators. We're part of what children, and we as parents, is to educate our kids, right? And it's, you know, the part is obviously the math, the science, the English, the all of the stuff. But even more importantly is what kind of people you want to grow up to be, right? And at the end, the way I embrace the McKinns is really to be respectful, good people, people that will not jump to conclusions, not be judgmental, not call people names publicly, not call for any kind of public persecutions and so on. But to give people benefit of the doubt, assume positive intent. I met some of you, I didn't know any of you three years ago, but I met some of you through my involvement since my kids have been going to school. And I can say with 100% certainty that you do have positive intent, that you're trying to do the best that you can do. It's because of you that me and my family just cemented us staying in Shakopee, not moving to a better school district, because we took conversations and knowledge and data and information provided us. We realized just how good of a school district this is and how well our path forward will be with this. So just as a person, as a resident, as another human being, right? Because it's, this stuff just gets lost in the heat of the moment and the battle. I just want to apologize for you, you know, what you and your family and your kids had to go through over the last month. Thank you.
I guess I just want to clarify, you guys, for everybody here tonight, that I'm certainly not here to bully you or anyone. I don't believe anyone here is here with the intention of bullying anyone. And, you know, certainly, I think we all just want the truth. We're here because we're concerned, and we're citizens of Shakopee, and we want the truth. And that's why I came here, that's why I asked you questions. So that's, I just want to clarify that for you.
My name is Julie Dahl, and I teach first grade over at Red Oak. And I'm also a parent in the district and live here in Shakopee. And I've been here for 16 years. Working at Red Oak, Rod, you've come over, and you know that we have a lot of questions. And we really appreciate that you have come over and Scott has come over to ask some questions that even as a staff, we don't know. And we just want the truth, and we want to get to the bottom of that. Our staff also has lots of questions for the board. And I think that the investigation that you guys have chosen to do is going to be very critical in the health of your employees to get just voices heard. And I thank you guys for doing that. I thank you, Rod, for coming over and continuing to answer our questions. And it's been really difficult. We've had some really tough conversations. And I'm just wanting to clarify, if you know, and I don't know how much you know, because you said it's kind of distant to you, but timeline on this and getting those questions out there, especially for Red Oak, for whatever reason, perhaps. I don't work in any other buildings, so perhaps there's other questions as well. But I think it's critical, and I don't know how much, that's maybe what my question is, is what is the timeline of this? Because I think it's important for you to get through your questions. And I know that we put the next meeting a couple of weeks out. And this, I mean, the timing of it could be critical. So that's my concern, is that those questions get answered. And so maybe it's for you, Rod, or if you know, okay.
I can't, honestly, I cannot answer a timeline. Other than to say, the train has left the station. Other than that, the only guidance that I was provided at all was that if someone thought it might take a week, they should triple that and suggest that maybe it's three weeks. If they thought they wanted to talk to two people, it should actually be six. That was the only guidance I was given, high level. And the most important thing is, I understand that they're not, I don't know who they're going to talk to or not talk to. The best advice I can give is, we need not put anything out there one way or the other. If we're going to, if this is going to be a genuine third-party investigation, we need to just let them do what they do, you know, to everybody's, but nobody wants to spend any more on this than we need to. But the fact of the matter is, it's good work that needs to be done from a culture perspective. And whatever comes of this, whatever comes of this, I think we're going to be, we're going to be better for it no matter, no matter how anything comes back. So I wish, I wish I had something for you, but I just, I just don't.
Okay. And you guys won't know? Is that kind of, that you really won't because it's a third-party thing?
The only thing that I'll get is...
Or you will?
I'll get a progress report as to what, where they're at, and maybe in their process. But I don't even know exactly how soon I'll get one of those, you know, to be honest.
Okay.
And it's, you know...
Or who they're asking or things like that. Because I just think it would be unfair if there were questions that were left unanswered, and we've scheduled a meeting two weeks out. And let's just say that they polled Red Oak staff or whatever. I think they're going to have different, so maybe it's a private conversation, but maybe we need to...
That's what I see what you're asking.
Yeah. So you'd say that I think that it would be critical for you to come Monday or Tuesday and continue to address the questions and the concerns, because you give me a survey today, or in two weeks, once my questions are answered, it's going to be...
Yeah.
What, you and I offline have a one-to-one?
Different conversation.
Yeah. And then, so I'll schedule with you right away and post it on our talk.
And figure that out.
Yeah. I think it's fair to say that kind of works, whatever, you know, what I was doing, that's ongoing, that's business as usual.
Right. But like, yeah, okay, so, all right.
But I...
You see what I'm saying? Yeah, then you've got to, you've got to take care of that first before a survey comes to employees and perhaps other buildings. I don't work in other buildings, but I think that that would be beneficial for all of you to have that happen, questions answered first from employees.
I totally get what you're saying.
Okay, all right.
Okay, see, nobody else popping up. I'm going to go ahead and close this part of the meeting here, and thank everybody for your comments, your feedback, for signing in, for being here, period, and being involved. So, thanks, thanks to everybody here. Number ten is a other. So, is there any other items that anybody here at the table knows we need to cover? No? Okay, let's move on to eleven, committee reports. We'll kind of do that around the horn, if you have any committee reports or updates that are remained at that evening. We'll start here with our vice to the cooker.
I don't have anything for you, sir.
I'm good.
Nothing.
All right, Ashley, going around Mr. Hare and Mr. Oleski.
Something about testing, you want to hear it?
Yeah.
Let's go.
We did something we haven't done before, we had eleven hundred and eighty kids test at the same time, so we modified the schedule of all our tenth and eleventh graders, and see, we tested at once. And we did a lot of planning for that, because we were very worried about the technology with Sarah Jordan at the high school, our tech team, my assistant, even our office staff, all went over, and we had, we made a call center at the high school, we had a help desk runners, and we really set it up to make sure it was as good an environment as possible for students, and really were a little nervous about doing that many kids at once, but it went great, and I attribute that to the kind of work of that crew that my assistant, Susan, jumped into, and the tech team did a great job, and Sarah as well. So, it was, just, nobody really gets that excited about testing evening, but...
I finally heard of it.
It went really well, and so I think the...
Computer-based?
Yeah, it was all computer-based, and we would not have been able to do that. It was very efficient as well that way, without the kids having their own devices. So, this was really the first year we were able to do that. So, it was good. Of course, there's always stuff, but it went great for that and the kids taking it at once.
Great.
Thanks, Dave. Todd and Amy?
Go.
Nancy?
I guess just two things. One is, because we were talking to industry councils earlier, which they've been awesome. This is our first year of having industry councils by academies. We have one more set of meetings with them in early May, and that's actually what we'll be doing, a dive on besides curriculum at that time, is actually looking at some of our new lab spaces with them for each academy, or existing lab spaces, depending on the academy, and looking at what our equipment needs might be as we go into that planning process of the fall of eighteen, when we need to outfit some of those lab spaces. And actually, I was just doing numbers in my head, I actually think between CAPS, the industry council, and the steering committee, we're well, almost to the one twenty-five to one fifty, probably community members who are, would you agree, Sarah?
Yeah, definitely.
When you talk about community members that are involved in the process in some fashion, which says so much about Shakopee in terms of their commitment to our kids. And that can be as much as three meetings a year, two internships that are being hosted by our local businesses for our CAPS kids, and that will just continue to grow. And then, another thing that's just been a lot of fun for me lately, I don't know if it's as much fun for Jeff as it is for me, but part of the referendum process that we're just getting started, and this would be again for the fall of two thousand and eighteen, is that we're looking at furniture for the expansion areas and others, some common resource areas, both in the classroom, out in our common resource areas. And one of the things that we're working to set up in early, early May is a furniture showcase for our students and our teachers. For two days, they'll be able to go in and look at some of the sample furniture that we're looking at as possibilities for when we implement in the fall and are open in the fall of two thousand and eighteen with expanded high school. They'll actually vote about what it is they like or don't like, and we'll use that survey data that we'll get from that showcase to help us set up some model classrooms and some model resource areas that'll actually be tested out in the fall, probably October, November for a while, by teachers and kids. And then, they'll give us feedback again about what they like and don't like, and that'll help us make a final decision next spring about what we'll order for the building in the fall of two thousand and eighteen. And that's going to be fun. And those of you that know me, know I love to talk classroom furniture.
I want to apologize back to this topic that I wasn't so excited about. I didn't realize Chris was here, and I don't know if you guys have met Chris, he's our, personally, right here as our...
Yeah, raise your hand.
He doesn't, he's a tech guy usually in closets or at hours or whatever, but he was really instrumental in making sure everything works, and I don't know if you've ever had the chance to meet him, but he did a really, really great job.
More than one time.
So...
That's a big professional issue.
Anything else, Nancy?
No, that was it.
All right. Good deal.
Yeah, I'll wait till after the next person.
We'll get back to you again.
Yeah, I just wanted to let everybody know again that our inclusive engineering project is in the middle and off and running with our special education department, Steph Bentley, who is our tech person for special ed, and she's partnering with our technology teachers at our junior highs for our special ed students and our general ed students to come together, and they're working on assisted technology devices, pairing students with general ed students to make devices for them to use, could be power to hold on to a weak control or something. But they're starting their meetings this week, and it's really exciting. The kids are getting bussed from the different schools, or the east and west, and they will meet with their partners, and they'll figure out what it is they're going to design to make their lives a little easier or better, or that they'll be able to access something. So, it's a very cool project, I'm really excited about, and it's getting a lot of kids involved, and, yeah.
What age kids are being bussed over?
All of them, elementary through high school.
Wow. And they're working together?
Yep. Yeah, I can't wait to get over there, they're all on my calendar, so we'll be checking it all out, so, yeah. I don't know if I should turn it back over to Dave or...
Yeah, Karen?
I was doing, as Nancy was doing, I believe it's upwards of one forty, one fifty also that are involved in the industry councils, and always looking for new members in any of the areas, always looking for new folks.
Doc, may I report, we already did that on the finance committee, but he doesn't know I'm going to do this, but I'm looking at him right now. I'll actually give a shout out to a young man in the back of the room by Braden Berger. There's his hand. Sam, show your uniform, show your uniform. So, Braden contacted me, I've done this in the past with some other scouts, and there's a merit badge, what's the name of your merit badge? Citizenship in the community, and part of the requirements for that is to, and I mean, I have this quite right written, so pardon me, but they need to interview an elected official, so they can go to the city council, or they can go to the school board, and in the past, I've done this a number of times. So, Braden contacted me and said, hey, can I talk to you? And we were trying to coordinate at times, we actually ended up speaking yesterday on the phone, it was about the redistricting process. He had some very good questions around what's going to happen when Pearson comes back on the lines in elementary. So, walked me through that process in a kind of a high-level fashion, he had some very insightful questions, and he said, I'll see you tomorrow at the meeting. I'm like, oh, you have to go to the meeting too. So, he had to sit tonight, poor guy. And he's here for the duration, I think he's here with that, and he had to sit through the duration, and remember, shaking his hand before it started to pelling, and he just thinks, well, we'll see. He's here. So, to his credit, he has earned, as far as I'm concerned, he's a mayor, so...
You'll all sign off.
Exactly. It's a nice job, Braden.
Tomorrow, the elementary core plane will be for district.
I will have more of an update after Mr. Pollock, about the saver closet, there's some things happening.
Oh, okay.
Right now, the Glow kids are creating a, we want this to be a student-led endeavor eventually, I don't know if you know what I'm talking about, but we're creating essentially what would be a nonprofit type experience for our kids to learn how to run inside our high school, where we provide clothing and toiletries to all students who need them. And right now, we're in a closet, so we call it the saver closet, but eventually, we will no longer be in a closet when we have the space. And our Glow kids are creating a survey to send out to all of the high school on what a great name for this new endeavor would be, so that they can own it. And then, when they own it, we'll also get them involved in the day-to-day running of it. So, it's going to be pretty cool, we have a lot of great community involvement donations involved, so.
Anything? Only thing I would add is, I'm sorry, Perry Malprone reached out to me, he is instrumental in the Shakopee Alumni Association, and on Friday, the twenty-first, at Canterbury Park, they have a gala that they're hosting, and he said that he would appreciate if ticket sales could improve and so forth. They do wonderful things, both for alum, but you don't have to be alum. It's people who have an investment in our community, and Perry said that one of the, kind of the cool things is, is to remind people that they have an angel fund. So, if you needed a violin, if a kid needed a violin and couldn't play a violin or a horn, this is a fund that's available, that you can go right to our Alumni Association, and they have a mechanism that'll do that. And then, they have a mechanism, if you're in athletics, that it's an angel fund, that if you couldn't afford soccer shoes or something like that, they set aside funds through the Alumni Association. So, I know that it, I've been to, I think, all of these, and they are a very good time. They find local band or local talent, and it's just kind of a nice, nice gathering, so if you can support them, they would, they would appreciate that. And that is on the twenty-first, you can go to the website, Ashley, do you know, is it on ours and their website?
It's on our website and their website, as well as all of our social media accounts. And you should have received an email about two weeks ago, they've got out District One.
It's a great organization.
Okay, so I have just a couple of little highlights. One of them maybe should have been good news is our Shakopee High School band students came back safely, safely from Europe, so we're happy they all made it back. I understand they had some unique opportunities in the airport trying to get back, so we're happy that they made it back. And our high school choir is gearing up for their European tour, which is next spring break to Poland, and this is a shameless plug, that they are now in the throes of their fundraising events. So, if anybody in this room has a hankering for beef jerky and cheese, I want you to know that they're selling them for two bucks, and they also have spring flowers and boxes of cards, these really nice boxes of cards, they're thirty bucks or whatever. If anybody's interested, hit me up, I'll give you all the information. But I want to make, it's a very small window that they're doing this, they don't have a large audience, so I'm going to take advantage of this opportunity and let you know, we've got another talented group of kids getting ready to represent Shakopee and the United States, quite frankly, next year. So, if you're interested, you need some flowers for your porch, let's help the kids out. Otherwise, I don't have anything in particular, other than looking at the slate of upcoming meetings. We have retreat next Monday at this time at six, and the twenty-fourth, April twenty-fourth, this is another fun event. We get to dedicate the Neil Johnson complex. We actually awarded Neil Johnson his, we knighted him, whatever term we want to use, it feels like it was forever ago, and now it's done. And that, his dedication is going to be on the twenty-fourth, so that's right around five-thirty, that sounds about right, still?
Yes.
So, and that's right down, right down at Von Field, so please bring your friends and family members, because that's going to be a really neat event. We have a school board learning session that night at six, and then a bunch of other fantastic events thereafter, but I won't bother to repeat them, because they're here. So, that said, I would like to entertain a motion to adjourn. Yes, oh.
What, what's the date when you'll be talking about the next year's budget?
That will be at the May, school board business meeting, that's May eighth at six P. M.
Okay.
Yes. Good question. Okay, entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion.
Sean and boss, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those pulling the same sign, motion carries. Here, adjourn.